When we call this meeting to order, we will hear instruction on how the public may access Spanish interpretation.
Thank you. The following message will repeat in Spanish. We are offering live interpretation into Spanish via our Zoom platform. To access our Spanish channel, press the interpretation button at the bottom of your screen where you will see a globe icon. Choose Spanish. If you join via Zoom smartphone app, select your language by clicking more with the three dots at the bottom of your screen. Select Language Interpretation and choose Spanish. Bienvenidos, estamos ofreciendo interpretación en español en vivo y en directo durante nuestra sesión en la plataforma Zoom. Para tener acceso a interpretación, oprima el icono del globo terráqueo al pie de su pantalla y seleccione Spanish o español según su formato. Si está uniéndose vía Zoom en su teléfono inteligente, seleccione los tres puntitos al pie de su pantalla, elija Interpretación de idiomas y pulse Spanish o español según su formato. Thank you. Back to you.
Great, thank you. We will start this meeting off with our land acknowledgement. The city of South Lake Tahoe acknowledges the lands we occupy today are the lands and the home of the Washishu, the people from here known today as the Washoe tribe of Nevada and California, a sovereign nation. Since the beginning of time and for thousands of years before the arrival of any other people, the Washoe lived here and cared for this place with values and intention that we can all learn from. On behalf of the city council, I would like to acknowledge, thank, and honor the indigenous Washoe tribal communities that are the past, present, and future stewards of the Lake Tahoe Basin. With that, we'll call this meeting to order and move on to the Pledge of Legions. And with that, Ms. Blinkinship, can we get a roll call?
Of course. Councilmember Roberts.
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Robbins.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bass.
Here.
All present.
Great. And Ms. Stroud, do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We had two items on closed session this evening. The first was conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation in the case of former employee Patrick Campbell, Workers Compensation Appeals Board, case number ADJ 14749718, and there's no reportable action. The second item was conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation regarding the case of former employee John Miller, Workers Compensation Appeal Board, case numbers ADJ 17872997 and ADJ 19215685, and there is no reportable action.
Great, thank you. With that, we're going to go ahead and move on to regular new business. This is our first item of business tonight, and this is going to be the status of city operations, city council reorganization, city council boards and commission, appointment to vacancies, and the process for filling city council vacancy. This will be started with our city manager, Mr. Joe Irvin.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Bass, members of the council and members of the public. I want to take a few moments and acknowledge the recent events that have affected our city organization and community. As you all know, the former mayor Tamara Wallace resigned effective immediately on October 13th via email to the city clerk. Her resignation and the events leading up to that event have been troubling for our staff, our elected officials, and our residents. I want to begin tonight by recognizing the professionalism of our dedicated employees who have shown tremendous work throughout this transition. Despite the circumstances, city operations have continued without disruption, and I'm extremely proud of how the organization has stayed focused to serving our community. The item presented to city council to consider tonight gives city council the option to talk about how to fill a leadership void if they choose to do so. It also gives city council the opportunity to discuss the boards and commissions that are vacant because of Ms. Wallace's vacancy. And it also gives the city council the important task to take on a conversation of how to fill that vacancy, whether that's through an appointment or a special election. But again, I want to thank our dedicated staff and our community for working with us and listening to us as we've been transparent throughout this process. And I'd like to take a couple moments and have our finance director give an overview of city's financial reporting processes.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Bass and members of the city council. I just want to make a brief statement regarding city audit and the audited financial statements. The city undergoes an independent financial audit every year as required by state law, California Government Code 26909, and sound financial management practices. The most recent audit have been conducted by Aid Bailey, LLP. The independent auditor's report is included in the financial statements within the financial section of the report. The AFR report is available on the city's website. For the most recent fiscal year and in September 30th, 2024, as in all prior years, the auditors have issued a clean, unmodified opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Olga. I would also like to follow up by saying not everybody understands how local governments operate. The city of South Lake Tahoe operates under the council manager form of government, which means the city council is elected and sets the policy. Amongst the council, they select the mayor and the mayor pro tem. The mayor has no access to the city's finances. That is managed by myself and our finance director. The council manager form of government is set up to allow me to sign for contracts that are approved by council authorization. No individual council member has access to city credit cards. And I just echo what our finance director said. We go through a rigorous review process annually, and that is something that we handle with pride. And the clean audit reports over a track record for a long time is something that we should all be proud of in this community. And I thank our finance director for her leadership of our finance team. I'd now like to turn it over to the city clerk to talk about some of the vacancy processes.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council. You have three decisions before you tonight. One is whether to fill the vacant mayor position. The second would be to fill vacancies on boards and commissions. There are a few that former mayor Wallace sat on. Not all of those will be convening before our normal process of selections on December 9th. There's, I believe, two that we may want to make a decision on before the December 9th date. And then lastly, would be a decision for you to decide to either fill the vacancy by appointment. And I would begin soliciting applications as soon as this tomorrow. And then we could bring back those applications for an appointment on November 17th. Or you could direct me to fill the vacancy by election, and we would hold that on June 2nd, consolidated with El Dorado County. Did you want to take each of these kind of in order and we make a decision about the mayor position? If you want, and then we can go to assignments, maybe filling the ones that are necessary, and then going on to the last item.
Why don't we do this when we come back from public comment, we can make that decision? Is that fair?
Okay, that sounds good.
So, thank you, Ms. Blinkinship and Mr. Irvin.
Mayor Pro Tem Bass, again, thank you for allowing us to give an introductory remarks on this item. Again, this item was placed on the agenda for the city council to have a discussion. And I know very well, the council has the authority to choose to appoint or not appoint or wait and have a discussion at a later date. All of those options are on the council's agenda, but I felt it necessary to put this on the agenda for the council to have a discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin. So we'll bring this back just for any questions that were relating to operations or anything that would be questions before public comment.
I understand the protocols to say that in order to place matter on the agenda, it takes two council members who have to agree to do so. I also understand that in the absence of the mayor, the mayor pro tem doesn't become mayor, but becomes the chair of the meeting by our own protocols. So I just want to point that out, and that we normally, typically, we appoint the committees and the select officers in December of each year. And am I correct in those statements?
That is correct.
Thank you.
If I may add to that, it is correct. And sometimes there are items added to the agenda that come up through administrative needs, applying for a grant, accepting funds. I think in this circumstance, recognizing that normally we do the appointment in December, which is right around the corner, this is the first time, to my knowledge, that we've had a vacancy of a person, a signed mayor by the council. So I just wanted to put it on to have the discussion, but everything that you mentioned is true and accurate.
Right. Since there are going to be some boards and commission meetings before our December 9th date, maybe you don't want a vacant voting position on something that council really does want to have a vote on. So I'm giving you the opportunity to fill those vacancies.
May I just comment? I agree with that comment that in regard to boards and commissions that council members may be assigned to, that to fill those vacancies where meetings are coming up, I agree 100% with that. I'm just talking about the commentary about other aspects of that. And I think the city manager or city attorney understand where I'm coming from on that.
Any other questions, Mr. Robbins?
Yeah, just clarification. The June date for an election, if we choose to go that route, that date is constrained, correct? Like, we can't choose to hold it sooner even if we wanted to. We are constrained for an election would have to be on that date, not any date earlier.
That is correct.
And where does that constraint come from?
That is in government code?
California government code?
Yes.
Great. It's not a city-generated constraint. That's a constraint we're given. I just wanted to make sure people are aware of that. Thank you.
Great, Mr. Robbins, any questions? No, great. All right, so with that, we will go ahead and open this item up for public comment. This is going to be the public's opportunity. You'll have three minutes. And yes, again, we will also open up public comment for any item that is not going to be on this agenda, just following this item. So if you're here for some type of public comment that isn't related to this item, that'll be coming next. So with that, whoever wants to come up first in the room. All right, Mr. Irvin.
Is this a meeting on cell towers? I might be in the wrong spot. I think I've known each of you a little bit too long. Cody, I love your weed. We all love smoking weed. It's a great thing. But it's not a good position for you to be in here in our city. We just need you to step down and go away with Tamara. I hate to say it, brother, I appreciate what you've done for the city. Go away, smoke your weed, enjoy your time, and be gone. We need new council. A lot of people have said, I should go for mayor. I don't think so. I don't think so. Tamara, I've been in a battle. I'm wondering where the money's coming from. You failed to mention his arrest, Joe. You failed to mention Cody's arrest, Joe. You failed to mention it. I'm making sure it's mentioned, Cody's arrest. This is not what our city needs, Cody. We need a leader that can shine, somebody that's at the top, somebody that can bring a lot of good things to this town. This is a global precious jewel, which is Lake Tahoe. I'm in a lawsuit against you guys on plastics in the lake from cell towers. You're the only guy that voted for us. We appreciate that. We want to keep fighting. David Jenkins, I've followed you from a distance for many, many years, sir. Thank you very much for what you've done for this town and protecting it for the many, many years. As we go forward, Cody, please just make it better for the city. I think there's enough opposition. I think there's been enough things going on. I think all of the audits need to be done. Who was being paid? The cell towers, all the buildings that came in, all the low-income housing. There's a lot of audits that need to go on with El Dorado County. There hasn't been an arrest. Dwayne Wallace stepping down. I mean, this is just so bad for our city everywhere across the United States. We need to move on. Heather, you need to move on. Sue, you need to move on. It's been years that I've been here. You guys have watched this go on for many years, smiling, giving me smirks. I'm sorry that I even have to come to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin. Yes.
Juan, I'd like to rebuttal. Weed's irrelevant to this. Cody did win the popular vote to be in our council, and he's serving us as well as gave the community, excuse me, gave the community an open letter as to what happened, and I encourage everyone to read it. And also, there's worse things than weed, which are the pharmaceutical companies that created the opioid crisis, knowingly and willfully, being with one of Purdue Pharmaceuticals that manufactured OxyContin, having been sued. And also, I think there might be pending criminal case against the Sacklers, but not sure on that. So far, the federal government seems to be mute, or was it mum, on prosecuting the Sacklers? Because I know there was a case with NCE Pharmaceuticals where the founder went to jail for mis, was it, he did a lot of stuff, but mis-marketed Subsys, which is a fentanyl opioid for cancer patients, but got marketed, I guess, for everyone. But there's a good documentary on the founder of NCE named Jon Kapoor, which is also on YouTube, and as well as a rapid, was it, a marketing video that wrapped the marketing of Subsys. But yeah, that weed is irrelevant, and I was born and raised here. And Cody won the election fair and square, and that's all there's to it. Thanks.
Would like to come up next, yes, sir. Just state your name for the record.
Yeah, hi. I'm Larry Pettigo. I've lived in town for about 50 years. Was here before the bomb, the party. Anyway, I'd just like to, a couple of comments about Wallace, really. My concern is that there was something in the paper right here, and it said that she was involved in some type of scam back in 2006 and was hundreds of thousands, 120 some thousand dollars in some type of insurance scam of some kind. And she was making restitution for 51 years, I think, if I remember from the article. Anyway, the point is that what kind of vetting process goes through getting on the council? I mean, it would seem to me, I mean, I went through vetting for Little League, you know, and I passed. And so I'm just kind of wondering, like, is there some kind of vetting here that, like, okay, can we see your, like, how did you get that $122,000 back in 2006? I don't know. I'm just asking the question, like, how, from 2006 to now, today, and there are people in this room that endorsed her, you know, that endorsed her for mayor, endorsed her for the city council, and endorsed her for the county, okay? Like, I mean, I would hope that they would feel like, wow, how did this get by me, right? That kind of a thing. And it's good to hear from the city manager and from the city people that they are guarding the money, and that's great. But also in the article, it mentioned other companies and other city companies or other chambers, you know, from Tulare County and so forth. And I would hope that our fine people from the police department would be sharing information because as far as I'm concerned, if she ripped off us, she could have ripped off, or the church, she could have ripped off other people. So I'm just kind of, my main concern is the vetting here. Like, how come when she was running for elected office, there was no clue as to this, you know, $200 a month restitution plan from 2006? I mean, I'm sorry, that just, you know, I mean, when I fill out an app or have ever filled out an app, it's like, have you been arrested, you know, or have you, you know, got problems? So I'm just kind of, I don't know, that's just my humble opinion on that matter. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Who would like to come up? Yes, just please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Pearl. I'm 23, and this is my first time coming to one of these meetings. I had no intention of standing here. I have not scripted anything to say. I have not thought about what I want to say today. But as I was listening to the public speak and as a local, I did want to say that I know none of your faces except for Cody Bass. And Cody Bass is the only person that I know on this council because he is the only one who represents my generation, a younger generation, that is interested in change. He's not perfect. He is flawed. Many of us are. But what I do see on this council is a lack of transparency. I think there is a lack of media. Information about the people on this council is not fully disclosed to the public. Our newspapers are not providing information about the individuals on council unless it is bad publicity. And I hope that people see that Cody Bass is not a threat to the people and that the mayor that we had previously is more so concerning.
Whoever would else would like to step forward, Mr. Moser.
Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Cindy Trigo. My first time here too, but not my first time at politics. In 2008, 2007 and 8, I ran a successful recall in the state of California as a leader. We had three corrupt council people, and we went through all kinds of rigors, but we did get it on the primary ballot election in February. And that was cheapest for the city to run it that way. I think with everybody speaking, the main issue here is to have ethical, responsible people who care about the city enough to actually sit here. Because you're elected to represent, by the constitution, we, the people. You guys were elected to represent the people and serve the people of this city, and that needs to happen. And if you're irresponsible and you're not doing unethical things, being arrested, embezzlement, things like that, you know, you don't need to be on the council. We need people here that are going to help the city. And I'm really disappointed. I have heart for people who have issues. But when you have repeated issues over and over and over again, something's wrong. There's a pattern. And this council needs to be responsible, to put responsible people on this board, to help serve the people of this community. It's a big tourism community, and I see more effort being made towards tourists than its local citizens. And I've met a lot of people in this community that are very dedicated and have been advocates for years, and I've spoken to a lot of them. And I'm hoping the decisions that you make are good decisions because we need to have good people on this council that's going to serve this community in the right way, make the best decisions for the masses of this community, and stand up for the people. If you have too many board meetings that you're assigned to and you can't do your agendas correctly for city council meetings, why don't you think about hiring some citizens committees to help you dive into those things? I know, I think it was Allen that was up here earlier for those 5G towers. I'm part of the Minden for Safe Technology on these cellphone towers. We need to have a better connection with El Dorado County for not placing these cell towers on children's schools. The uptick of cancers are incredible. Our lawyer, Scott McCola, who was Robert F. Kennedy Jr.'s attorney, okay? He's the best attorney in the country, and he is fighting for safe technology people throughout the country. He won a 2021 lawsuit with the Second Highest Court in DC to do health studies, and that hasn't been done yet by the court system, hasn't put that upon the FCC. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Moser, or, Mr. Moser, go ahead.
Good evening, Ed Moser, South Lake Tahoe. After much deliberation, I would just put my two cents in for, I think you should choose to make Mr. Robbins the mayor and take it from there for Mayor Pro Tem. You know, it's my opinion, he's the only one that's not tainted now. Some people would think because of his support and putting forth Measure N, dislike him and a great deal of vehemence. But, you know, he went the legal route in that, you know, I didn't agree with that. I said that, you know, you couldn't enforce it and that it wouldn't work, and that wasn't really the solution. I did sign the petition about two or three days before they had to turn it in, when they already had 2,600 signatures, just as a support to them because of all the heat they were taking and things that were said, and it was very nasty and vindictive. But my signature didn't mean anything. They already had 1,000 more than they needed. But, you know, I told them at the time that it wouldn't be, you know, that I wouldn't vote for it, and I didn't vote for it. But, you know, aside from that, you know, Cody, you've had, you know, a number of issues. And, you know, I agree with a lot of your stances, most of your stances and positions. But, you know, there is some taint there over time and some things, matters that you need to clear up presently. Mr. Jenkins, you know, both you and Mr. Roberts have been supporters. You both voted and basically made Tammy mayor by going along with her. And she nominated herself to be mayor in December, and the two of you went along with that. So, you know, your judgment is, you know, over the years, especially with you, Mr. Jenkins, is more than questionable. You agreed with the Wallises during the VHR debates back in 2003, '04. And, you know, concerning property rights, which judges ruled you were wrong and wrong in judgment. They didn't have property rights for the VHRs. And I don't think either of you or Mr. Roberts should be in the leadership position here. So like I said, you know, the choices are slim and none here, but I would just suggest, and go with Mr. Robbins. He's the only one that's really not tainted here in any which way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Yes, just state your name if you could for the record.
Hi, I'm Samantha. I'm 27. This is my first time here. I came because I realized with everything going on, it's important now more than ever that I stay informed and involved in what is happening in our community. I am a new business owner, and I'm very concerned by the conduct of our elected officials. As a business owner, which I know you are too, but personally, I feel I have a responsibility to uphold a high standard of conduct for myself, and I know many others feel the same. And if I conducted myself the way Cody Bass has on many occasions, the public would not support my business, and it would be canceled. So how is it that as an elected official, he is held to less standards of moral conduct and is not held accountable? It's a privilege to hold a seat in our community. You're supposed to be our leaders and role models who set the standard, and by him not resigning and staying in a position of power, you're showing us the little respect you have for your community and saying this behavior is okay when it is not. It's a shame and it's embarrassing that this is even a discussion and that our town's reputation, full of hardworking people, is overshadowed nationally by scandals like these. We do not want to be known for violence and theft. I want us to be represented by people who take their position seriously and humbly. So I ask that Cody Bass resign or be removed, and we can start fresh as a town. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. If we could, just please try to keep the applause, it's part of our policy to not support one side or the next from the public. So if you don't mind, just please try to keep the claps to the minimum, if you could. And who would, Mr. Gregrich?
Good evening, David Gregrich from South Lake Tahoe. A wise person once told me not to mess with electeds figuring out their stuff. I will mostly abide by that advice. As far as mayor, pro tem, who sits on what boards and committees, that's the Bailey As far as Mayor Pro Tem, who sits on what boards and committees, that's the bailiwick of you four. I will provide my two cents, however, on the council vacancy. That is the bailiwick of the people, the electorate. Political and policy legitimacy derives from a mandate from the masses. I encourage you to choose the election option. This will allow the new council member the political and policy legitimacy needed to deal with the many matters of the city's needs, issues, and functions coming before the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregrich. Yes, just please state your name for the record as you come forward.
Hi, Alan Miller. I agree with the prior speaker that I don't think this city council should be appointing anybody. Based on comments that I put in the record for the subsequent item, I vote no confidence in you and that we don't want to see one of your cronies elevated when there's all these serious issues to be dealt with. And so I just wanted to add my weight to the commenter before. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Scott Lowberg, South Lake Tahoe taxpayer. On January 30th of 2024 and also on March 25th, 2025, Cody, you along with other council members had training. You even had harassment prevention training, yet you go and harass a citizen across the border in Nevada just doing his job. It's despicable. And then you've got Scott Robbins, who is despicable as well. He does not build any consensus at all. He doesn't belong on the city council, certainly not as an elevated position. I don't care if he has done it before or he hasn't done it before. You know, we're done with this, everybody gets a damn trophy. It's your churn. All you're going to do is end up getting good council mayors and bad mayors. Why don't you get the best mayor available and that would be David Jenkins and Keith Roberts? They don't have the kind of baggage and the kind of garbage that the two of them have on Scott Robbins and Cody Bass. We don't need your kind in this community. Thank you.
Whoever would like to come forward, go ahead, just state your name for the record.
Good evening, council members. My name is Anthony Wolf. I have a master's in organization and leadership and my background undergrad is in political science and economics. It's my first time standing here because I normally like to stay out of the city council business and things like that because I've been living here for about a year. Unfortunately, what I'm about to say is going to be relatively unpopular, so I hope you bear with me a little bit. The first thing I'm going to say is that the council is elected. And I know at least half of you here have some baggage and were reelected despite that baggage. For example, David Jenkins has the hole that still sits near the, near the hotels, near state line. Cody Bass has had previous misdemeanors before and as they say, innocent until proven guilty. Rather than focus on who should resign or how many members of the city council need to be cleared out for Tahoe to feel clean, my advice is, as some previous comments have said, to focus on the present and to focus on the issues moving forward. I like the idea of electing some member, but I think it takes too long, so I instead suggest that an appointment be made from those who had run for election before. Some of them have run against some of you who are sitting here, so I don't believe it would be upping someone's crony to have someone like Nick Spiel, for example, to sit on the council.
Oh my God.
Now, I understand it's unpopular with other people in the public, but who among them had also run? It doesn't have to be Nick, it could be somebody else, but I think that would be the wise decision in order to get over this issue quickly. Yeah, so, thank you.
Anybody, yes, go ahead. Or, Miss, sorry.
Hi, y'all. Yeah, my name is Tim Fagin. I've lived in this community for 57 years and I've had, I own my own home. And I've watched corruption in the city council for all this time. In one way or another, one, two, three, I've watched it when Operation Snow was in effect and the mayor, Terry Trump, was arrested, okay? And this has no, the city council in this city has, should have, people have no business sitting on this city council that is, doesn't have integrity. Okay? And that, what I mean by that is if you are, if there's any drugs involved, if there's any of that, and excuse me, but even if you own your own business and you're legal selling the drug, you're probably smoking it. And I've had, I'll mention Glenn Miller, who was my carfractor, he got penalized for that, he's sent to, sent to prison for that whole operation, okay? And there's a couple of other things. First of all, I've watched people, I voted for a tax increase on, that you, they would use for our streets, to repave the streets and keep up with that, and it turns out that they spent that money on something else. And that is corruption, corruption, corruption in my book. Okay? We've spent taxes for that and now you're arguing about three streets and whether or not you have money to pay for paving three streets in town. That's ludicrous. You know, you shouldn't be, that shouldn't even be a question. These should have been worked on and paved a long, long time ago with money. And then there's one other thing I wanted to say. We got fined for having a carport up a few years ago in our, in our town. We came to the, to the, the city manager, came to our house, we got fined by the police chief, I didn't get it down at the allotted time, I got it down, took, took it down, okay? And nobody else in town got fined and they're up all over town. And I want to know what the heck you guys are going to do about it. You know, you fined us, didn't give my partner the money back, okay? And it cost about $400 for that and they're popping up all over town and nobody's doing anything about it. That's just corruption, corruption, corruption. Okay? We even gave them addresses of the ones, they said, bring you the address. We did that and you didn't do anything about it. And now they're popping up more and more and more. Okay? So, and then it cost us to put up a, a carport, $30,000, probably the best carport in all of town. Okay? So that's all I have to say about it. But you need to not be sitting on the city council if you're having anything to do with this. Okay?
Thank you for your comments. And Mr. Aaron, if you could please not clap, I'd really appreciate it, it's a part of our policies. Thank you. No worries. Ms. Soderstone?
Yes, Melissa Soderstone, South Lake Tahoe. I've lived here for more than 23 years and I have attended nearly every single city council meeting for more than a decade and I have counted or commented on countless different issues. And I look around the room today and there are maybe two or three people that I recognize from regular meetings. So I don't really think that anybody who does not feel that it is their business on a day-to-day basis to come in and actually engage on city issues has any business speaking today on who deserves to sit here. I have been calling out Ms. Wallace since the beginning for almost seven years now for her apparent conflicts of interest and failure to recuse on numerous items, which were obvious conflicts and benefiting her and her husband, so very glad to see her gone. As someone who has attended every city council meeting for more than a decade, Hal Cole was my landlord at one point, I've witnessed the last three city councils and how they behave, how they interact with each other, and this one is by far the most effective that we've had. Unfortunately, Tamra screwed all that up and has left us in a position of chaos. And what we don't need is more chaos. Cody has shown time and time again that despite his personal choices, he has done nothing but represent the best interests of our community. He has spoken with integrity at every level, he has been willing to compromise on every single issue, he has been the only one able to mediate the ridiculous arguments between some of the other city council members, and he's also the only one that has any experience at this moment. So because everything is so chaotic already, we have a lot that is going on with vacation rentals and all the other crap that we're dealing with, we don't need more chaos. I believe that Scott deserves his chance, it should have been his turn. I don't think that there's very many in the community that are going to support me on that and like I said, we don't need more chaos and, you know, I don't think any of these people are going to show up again after, you know, they speak their piece tonight. They will not engage on, you know, issues when it comes to, you know, area plans and potholes and, you know, tree trimming and all the other crap that we have to deal with, but you know, they want to come here and feel empowered today. So I just hope you guys make the right choice for our city and maintain some sense of normalcy and just move past the chaos because anybody here can go back and look at the last decade of city council meetings and see how Cody has behaved and see how he's voted and they can see the progress on transportation issues and cleanliness issues and art installations and all the other good things that we have going on and, you know, I give Cody a lot of credit for that. So thank you all and please make the right choice.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Soderstone. Just state your name for the record.
This is not chaos, this is community organization. The chaos in this room is on this side of the panel, not this side. We are all here, this is the biggest turnout we've had in our community because people care. This is organization. We have been communicating with each other about being here and showing up for one another. And the reason why this is important, because this represents the future of our community. We are representative of the youth. The people that are here behind me are organizing to be here today because we know that we are setting an example for the future. The people in middle school, all the way up to the community college level. People that are here today are here because they care. I was at the community college yesterday registering our youth, making sure that they know that their voice is important and that their vote is their voice. And having to confront them about, having a conversation about what's happening in our city council right now, it was embarrassing. And we worked really hard to instill hope in them that we were going to do something about it. And that's why we are all here. I'm sure everyone would rather be at home with their families, they've all worked a really long day, and that's where we should all be. I appreciate you coming to every community city council meeting and speaking your voice, but that doesn't mean that the rest of us don't have the right to be here. Whatever you decide, please keep in mind that we are setting an example for the people coming, the generation that follows us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And who would like, yes, sir, just please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Jamison Preby. I've lived here and worked here, working homeless as a tree worker, ace tree climber for the past five years. Last, last spring, friends of Bass weaponized the cops against me and lied and got me arrested and stole over 70 grand worth of my stuff. I don't know if you probably didn't know anything about it, but they were friends and I was offering drug recovery services, stuff like that, and yeah, I was attempting to run for city council last, last election cycle before all this happened. So I'd like to submit myself as consideration for council. And yeah, I'm well aware of the issues that face this community. I, a lot of the stuff you guys do on the outside seems really positive and it, there is a lot of positive impact in the community, but at the same time, most of the stuff government touches, it makes worse. It, you know, it's one thing to say, oh, I want to do this, but the vacation home rental thing, it's killing the economy. Businesses are leaving, have left, families have left. Sheila Benson, the owner of the restaurant over here, she, she fled town because of all the drama. It's like a TV show and it's kind of cool in a way. I actually commend Ms. Wallace for admitting and being an example of recovery, actually. Corruption and stuff is somewhat expected from our government nowadays and with social media and the news, everything is, is transparent, there's no hiding it anymore. And unfair policing practices, I wasn't, I wasn't ever questioned. Witnesses basically completely lied, there was no evidence, it was just complete hearsay. And, and yeah, I'm fighting to get my fiancee from the Philippines over here. I'm not going to talk any more bad stuff about you, but everybody's already kind of, kind of said that stuff, so I'd just like to end with that and hope that you guys reach out to me and we can talk more.
Thank you for your comments. Who would like to step up next? Anybody else in the room? All right.
All right, guys. I know I don't come to these things very often, but I'm out in the community and I'm very aware of things that are going on and going haywire. I've been an advocate for children in this community for 33 years. I'm sitting on boards, aging commission at this time. I'm working in cahoots with, supporting our seniors right now, our vets. I don't come to these meetings, sweetheart, because I'm busy in the community. And I appreciate all of you trying to do the best you can, but I've been saying for years, as a business owner, struggling to survive in this community, stop building villages and let's go back to the small business that make this town survive. Otherwise, we don't have a workforce, we don't have anything here. It just has to stop. And I don't come to these things because I have trusted you guys to do the right thing for our city, but obviously, I was mistaken. And being out there now and involved with the senior and the vets programs, there's so much wrong, it's just disgusting. And I am, it breaks my heart that I have to stand here and ask people to actually care about the citizens in this town because we are losing the citizens. And I'm not going to beg you to do the right thing, I just think that should be a given. Mr. Robbins, I would not support you in that capacity. Cody, I know you, it is what it is. I like you as a person, sometimes we all have ghosts in the closet. Again, you guys, we are all trying to survive in this small town, which has become a big veil priority and it has to stop, it has to stop. Our business owners are suffering and it's not because of lack of employment, it's because of the government programs and forcing them not to want to work because we're all paying our taxes and they get to stay home for free. I mean, come on. We have to get back to the basics. This town is not lost yet, but it's damn close. All I ask you to do is please put your efforts back into the community in this city. We can unite our members again if everybody plays well together. That means everybody. I no longer have the capacity to trust people to do their jobs, so I do my own research and I check out people and their backgrounds. And yes, there are some shitty things going on, so excuse my language. I love where I live, but I don't get to enjoy it because it has become a wart on our society. Please change it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And Mr., yes, Mr. Asbury?
Hello, Eric Asbury.
Hello, Eric Asbury. Hello, city council and staff. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. I must say, a lot of stuff going on. I don't want to duplicate, you know, past comments, but I am going to miss the chopping it up with the mayor series. So, um, you know, with that said, um, uh, I was going to encourage further dialogue, maybe creating a sanctuary city for the Bears. I was going to be a voice for the Bears tonight. And, um, you know, this, uh, there's a lot of political stuff going on. Political climate's pretty high and, and a lot of the climate talks about sanctuary cities. So I thought maybe since we already have the Bears, that we could create a situation where the Bears can like misbehave here and there, maybe get some honey from the cabinet, and maybe we go ahead and punish the people that allowed them to get into the cabinets. So I know that's kind of a little bit of a different topic than what we've been discussing, but I wanted to have a fresh voice on that. Then as far as the appointments for mayor and mayor pro tem, I was going to encourage dialogue with two people that haven't had either position, in David Jenkins and Keith Roberts, however you guys decide. Cody, you've been a great spokesperson. I think you're a great leader. You've done a lot of good stuff for, um, for this community, and I appreciate that. You've always been very cordial and respectful, you know, in the communications I've had with you. I just think with your, you know, innocent until proven guilty, but, you know, in the climate that we have going on with the previous mayor and, you know, the scandal and whatnot, that having anything involved with the law might be not prudent. And then Scott Robbins, I think it's kind of safe to say that he would be the last person I hope that this council would consider for mayor or mayor pro tem. He's been an embarrassment to this community. And, you know, we aborted mission on a recall effort. But nonetheless, I just want to focus on the good and maybe, you know, like I said, encourage some further dialogue on the sanctuary city for Bears. And, um, yeah, look forward to talking to you on some of these other agenda items later tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Asbury. Yes, Mr. Ruben Messina.
I'll keep this short. I'm very sad and conflicted by these recent events. But Tammy and Cody have been a friend and asset to our city for many years. And currently, while Placerville, Sacramento, and Carson City are struggling to, uh, they're laying off people, canceling programs because they are not financially stable. Our city is still doing well, and they both contributed to our success, and I appreciate that. Their transgressions will be addressed by the courts where they should be. They should not be getting tried here in the city hall or in our media. That is inappropriate. We've, uh, so we need to move past these things and work on filling the seat less left vacant by Tammy. And I think we'll have more discussion about who fills it later, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messina. Uh, yes, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Hello, I'm Gant Miller. I'm a citizen here in South Lake Tahoe. I really just have a question for the council. It seems like we have two younger liberal members of city council and two older, more conservative members of city council. Anybody who ever looks at anything that has to do with government or has to do with the Supreme Court knows that an odd number helps make decisions. So if a council member isn't appointed, if we, the citizens, don't elect a new one through a special election, what happens with, you know, topics that we need to decide, like the VHR topic, which regardless of which way it goes, it feels like we do need a decision? You know, I know that citizen engagement is a great thing, and it's, I echo a lot of the statements that a lot of my fellow members of South Lake Tahoe said here. And I am concerned about how we appear to the rest of the world. People here work hard for their money and they, um, you know, and they want to make sure that people that they, you know, have, represent them, do so in a way that makes them proud. And we haven't felt that way. So it would be nice to, you know, have whatever the resolution is here, something that, you know, we can move forward with and that doesn't just end up at impasses for the next, you know, next year. Because that would be unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And we will answer a question at the end of the public comments for you. Anybody else in the room that would like to make a public comment? Yes.
Hello, Laura Koski. Once again, here we are, over development. I really wish we can address these issues. There's way too many accidents out there. And I've talked about this over and over and over again. And we really need to work with the TRPA. This is not working. The community is outraged. And I can't keep writing letters to President Trump to have him fly out here and fire people. And I'm not kidding, he already has flown out. And he's taking this very serious. I look at Tahoe as the Olympics, trying to get the kids to, on the ski team and kayaking and rafting. And I've been spending my whole life out there, working with them and promoting them and getting them there. And I just struggle with the alcohol and drug abuse, and I always have. It's been something I just, it doesn't fit with the outdoors, trying to get these kids in leadership positions and out there on very dangerous ski slopes and on the river and mountain biking and everything else. I've put my energy in, as well as others. At the same time, I, I try to be as open-minded as I can, and it just, it doesn't work. They're always the ones that will bankrupt the companies or themselves. And it's, they just don't show up to work and whatnot. It's really affecting our community. Over all of that, I, I just, we have to focus as a team. We have to work on these problems. And I don't want this city council giving money to the TRPA. If that's a violation of the city council's rules, then it needs to stop. And we need to follow the treaty with Nevada and California. You know, these are laws and regulations that we're supposed to abide by, and we have not been. And, uh, you know, the Oversight Committee, Bass, you and I went in front of them, and we promoted all our solutions and ideas. And sure, they were trying, and they have no clue of the dangers this town has promoted. And with all the accidents on the cars and the scooters and whatnot, I can't tell how much time I have, so.
And also, we do have open public comment next, but we're just trying to stay within the item, which, in a way, you are.
Okay, so that green light, I'm done?
Please try to keep it within the.
You have thirty seconds left.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else in the room that would like to give a public comment? Yes, please come forward.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Havard. This is my first time to the podium. I just want to just very quickly say this is an important decision. Don't take it willy-nilly. As a business owner in the community, I think it's important that we take the time to get the residents to be able to vote on who the next mayor is going to be or how the next city council member that comes in, that we take the time, that we just don't make a flash decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else that would like to make a comment? Go in once. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move to our Zoom platform. Ms. Blankenship.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem House. We do have two hands raised on Zoom. First, we have Ms. Ballard.
Hi, everyone. Stacy Ballard here. Everyone who's criticizing the people on this council who are public figures, are you willing to share your mistakes that you regret? The people you've hurt, the way you've tried to numb your own pain, whether through drugs, alcohol, food, or other people? It's time to stop. I love seeing all the people that showed up today, but you're not showing up for the positions that need to be filled. You're not showing up for regular meetings. And, and, and yet they're, and yet you're asking for perfect humans to fill all these positions. They don't exist. I have run for city council. I have and do sit on commissions for this city. So much does need to be done in this city, but we all need to do the work. We're all busy. None of us have extra time. But you, you still got to show up. I agree with the woman who said this has been the, one of the best city councils I've seen in the thirty years that I've lived here. Every city has problems. And I am sad to see what this town is going to, through, but this too shall pass. I consider Tammy Wallace a friend of mine, and what she did was wrong, and she knows it. But it wasn't worth her life. Maybe if we truly listened to kids and adults, when they speak up about the abuse and trauma they've suffered, fewer people would reach a breaking point and act out in self-destructive ways. A quote from Frederick Douglass, "It's easier to build strong children than to repair a broken man." Thank you for listening. I thank all of you for the work you've done. We're all busy, but if it's important to you, show up, stop judging. We all live in glass houses, people. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ballard. Next up? Sorry, next up, we have Ms. Reagan.
Hi there. My name's Angie Reagan. I'm a resident of South Lake Tahoe. I've spoken before about favoritism, misuse of power, and lack of accountability in our city government, particularly involving council member Cody Bass, including my comment on September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. Unfortunately, the pattern has not changed. On September twelfth, twenty-fifth, Mayor Pro Tem Bass was arrested and charged with assault, harassment, and trespassing. He says he's innocent, deserves due process, and that's true. But accountability is still his responsibility. This isn't the first incident. In twenty-twenty-one, he pleaded no contest to a DUI involving substances in his car. To my knowledge, there's been no real apology, acknowledgement, or sign of rehabilitation. Meanwhile, I understand the city staff can be drug tested, including cannabis, but an elective official with multiple substance abuse-related arrest owning a dispensary cannot. That double standard erodes public trust. I also worked for Cody Bass at his Tahoe Wellness Center unpaid, helping reopen what was supposed to be a community space. When I raised health and safety concerns, he told me in writing that people, only people without health issues could use the space. That's discrimination. And when I filed an OSHA complaint, he denied owning the property. That's another lie. Tahoe Wellness Center also once argued for onsite cannabis consumption for city tax revenue, then asked to lower those taxes and maybe came too high. That's not community service, that's self-interest, along with parts of the Midtown Plan. It raises a question. Are employees and others in our town with similar charges treated this way are only wealthy, well-connected white men with money and lawyers? Tammy Wallace took responsibility, sought treatment, and stepped down. Mr. Bass has done none of that. No apology, no humility, and no acknowledgement of harm. So I asked Cody Bass, do you have a conscience? Do you care about the damage you've done? If you do, prove it, step down and seek treatment. And to this council, if employees are drug tested, elected officials should be too. Accountability must apply to everyone equally. South Lake Tahoe deserves leadership built on honesty, fairness, and empathy, not denial, discrimination, and self-interest. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Reagan. We have an additional hand, Grace Schumacher.
Real quickly, could you just confirm, is this the correct time to make a comment on an item that is on the agenda for this evening?
That's correct, one, item number one.
Okay, for an item number eleven, should I be waiting to make comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my apologies.
Uh-huh. There are no additional public comments at this time, Mayor Pro Tem.
Great. All right, so we're going to go ahead and bring this back to council. We talked about before, talking about as a council, if we want to take these in order as they're listed on the agenda or if, if you guys would move them around. What that would mean is that we would go ahead and take on whether we're going to select a new mayor, whether we're going to, in the instance, I become the mayor, then there's a mayor pro tem seat that would become vacant. Or there's also an option in that situation that we just move forward to the December ninth meeting. And as we are doing now, the mayor pro tem would consent to serve as mayor, so.
Cody, before we move on to that, I want to address one, at least one of the items that was brought up by the public.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, one of the questions I think that was probably most notable, and a question I've gotten many, many times since the events of the last week, is who does vetting for city council? Why isn't there better vetting?
So.
I'm sorry, this was a question from the public. This is a response to that as part of our protocols.
So then I would actually ask for our city attorney to answer those questions for us because they're our staff. So like if we.
Cody, I'm, I'm giving a response.
Well, I'm the mayor. So the process of this for when we have city questions like that is we go to the city attorney to answer those questions. So if we have a question about who's going to be, how do we vet? The process is, that's a, that's a question for the city attorney.
So to answer the question, whether we can do background checks for city council candidates? No, we cannot do that. Under the government code, which is the state law, we have to follow. Anyone who is over eighteen and is resident of the city and registered to vote in the city and, you know, doesn't have felony conviction essentially is eligible to run for council. And then the voters elect the people who are sitting up here.
That's not the point I was actually getting at. So the response that I want to give to the public.
There's a process here. We, we will have questions answered from the public. We don't respond. It's part of the, it's, well, it's part of the city code is we don't.
We are allowed to have responses to public comments. It's in the statement of public comments. We are allowed to have brief responses. The brief response is this. The relevant place where vetting of candidates needs to happen is the press. The local newspapers have that responsibility. It can't be the responsibility of government, no matter what we might want, to vet elected people who are running for office. It's the press that has that responsibility. And there has not been in our recent history.
A more clear example?
A more clear example of the need for a strong and effective local press to investigate candidates who run for office, to ask hard questions and to look into their backgrounds. So when this next election comes up in, in less than a year, I would make sure to ask everyone in this room to urge our local media outlets to do that.
We're in public comment, and why we just address the questions and not try to have your debate is because not all of us also get to give our opinion because that's not the point of the meeting we're in. But anyways, we also had a question from Mr. Gant Miller that I will point to the city attorney, that what would happen in the instance we continue at a two-two vote? What would then be the process for us to move forward in that situation?
So under state law, council, when there's a vacancy, which here started October thirteenth, has sixty days to fill that vacancy by an appointment or to call a special election. The election can be outside of the sixty days, but that's the timeframe in which you have to make a decision. So if, if there's a two-two, you know, if city council decides to have a special election and that's not until June second, we'll have four council members until that seat is filled.
Mr. Mayor, um, as, as, um, just one, there's one other thing to, to, for a person to be eligible, you have to be at least eighteen years of old. And you also have to be a citizen of the United States, as I understand it, even in California. And, um, um, also, we have an election coming in November of next year for three seats on the city council. And, um, uh, the, if, if an election were held, my understanding, and I can be corrected, is that we could not hold an election until a hundred and forty-four days at a minimum. Excuse me. It's all the great dialogue we're here. A hundred and forty-four days, it has to be held after the vacancy occurs, I understand it. And so now we're pushing into January, February, March, maybe April, to hold an election that, for a seat that would be vacated in November, would have to run again. So that's, that's the, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, I appreciate the point, Mr. Jenkins. Let's go ahead. I think we've answered every question. Was there any other questions you caught in public comment that needed to be addressed? I think we got to them. I, I, I'm sorry, we, we're not allowed to do the dialogue back and forth because we finished public comment. So yes, I will come to talk to you after we can talk about the issue. So let's move on again. Do you guys, as council, would you like to take these in the order that they're going ahead and listed, just so we can follow along? Is that all right with everybody?
I think, I think the first, I think the first thing to do is to fill the assignments, the appointments. I think that's the easiest thing to tackle. And I think that's probably the most relevant. Despite the profile of mayor, that's actually the most important, is the vacancies.
Okay.
Because there's upcoming meetings and votes.
If everybody's okay with that, I'm okay with that. Is that okay? So then I'm going to look to Ms. Blankenship. We really only, I believe, have two appointments that are very necessary before December ninth, based on meetings that may happen between now and December ninth.
So there are.
There are vacancies on the California Tahoe Conservancy. Their next meeting is December eleventh, so that's fine. We'll have that filled before then. For the City Selection Committee, that's only assembles to choose who's going to sit on LAFCO or the Oversight Board, so we don't need to have one of those. For LAFCO, Mayor Protem Bass is already the alternate, so we don't need to select anybody for that. The El Dorado County Oversight Board, we're not going to have a meeting until January or February. For the Cal Tahoe JPA, they're not going to have a meeting until January. For the Clean Tahoe Program, they are going to hold a meeting on November nineteenth, so you may want to select a second for that. And for Padma, they are having their next meeting on December third, so you may want to choose somebody for that. We do have an alternate of the city manager or city attorney, so they could step in to fill that alternate. And there is, for the Tahoe Prosperity Center, they will have a meeting sometime in December. This is just a city council liaison.
Question. In staff meeting, there was some back and forth question as to whether or not the Tahoe Prosperity Center was a voting seat or whether or not it was a liaison seat, and it was a little unclear. Do we have a definitive answer?
Council liaison.
But it's not a voting appoint, it's not a voting seat.
But we can take that on December ninth, right? Because that's one that's later in December, so we won't deal with that one tonight. So really, the only two that we're going to be dealing with tonight is Padma and.
Clean Tahoe.
Clean Tahoe.
Yeah, that would work.
So that's pretty simple for us. I will actually start this out. I have been and sat on Padma for, I believe, the whole seven years I've been here and have worked with that board, and the board has come to me, the president of the board, and would like to see Mr. Jenkins there. And so I don't know if there's any other council members that are looking to sit on Padma. This is Park Area Development Management Association manages the sidewalks that are in the Village of Heavenly. So unless there's interest from somebody here, I can make the nomination, or we can open it up for discussion.
David, do you want it?
Good question.
Start with that.
I will do it. If asked to do it, I will.
You could select the second one and then do a motion for both seats. Is that okay?
That's great. So then Keith, is there any comments to the Padma election, or would you like that? If you'd like it, please speak up, and we can have an open discussion.
No, I'm not interested in that position. I'm already on Clean Tahoe.
Okay, well, that makes it a little bit easier. So let's move to Clean Tahoe. Interest from Mr. Robbins or Mr. Jenkins on Clean Tahoe? No? Not particular?
I guess we need two, right?
We have to have one more on Clean Tahoe, and that's going to be the only two that we need to make.
Right, it was, it's two voting seats, right?
For me, I think I sit on, I have a pretty full calendar with the amount of assignments I do already, so. Well, he's already, we have to have two on this board, so we.
Yeah, we have one meeting, it's just that there's one meeting before, no, there's two meetings before the end of the year, right? November and December?
They only have one more.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll pick it up.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's the third Tuesday, or third Thursday of every month, so they will, no, we'll probably have a meeting before then in December, so just for the November meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins.
So anyways, that's perfect. Those are the two. So would somebody make a motion for those two appointments for Padma and Clean Tahoe?
All right, so then I'll nominate Mr. Jenkins for Padma and myself for Clean Tahoe. Yeah, I didn't, I usually don't like it, but like, let's just get this moving.
Who seconded that one?
No one seconded it yet.
Mr. Roberts has seconded.
That motion carries. Thank you.
All right, so if we're continuing, just to move down, we would then look at to pass a motion either directing the city clerk to solicit applications to fill the vacancy by appointment on city council for the remainder of the term ending in December twenty-six, or direct an assertive clerk to schedule a special election consolidated with El Dorado County on June second of twenty-twenty-six to fill the vacancy for the remainder of the term ending in December of twenty-six. So I feel that we should probably first have discussion exactly on that. Of course, I will ask one question. In the event that we decided to go out for solicitation, we bring that back on the seventeenth of November, and we don't end up at an appointment because we weren't able to make the decision, will we still at that time, would we be able to make the decision to then go out to special election and still make that June second? Have we, I'm sorry, I should have asked this before, but it just.
As long as it's within the sixty days.
Within the sixty days, okay. So I just wanted to.
And you can hold as many special city council meetings until you get the right candidate if you want to fill by appointment. If the first round, you don't get a candidate you like, and you would like to keep soliciting, we can do that in that sixty day.
It's sixty days until we call for the election. And so we, in principle, although I wouldn't recommend it, could have special meetings continuously until that sixty-day threshold, and then we're forced to call for an election as the only alternative. That's fine. So my, my only thinking is I'm not, I'm not exceedingly, I don't, I'm not exceeding, I don't think it's exceedingly likely that we're going to necessarily find a great candidate, but I haven't seen, I don't know who's going to, who's going to apply yet, so. I think probably the, for my suggestion, is that I think the best bet here is to put out requests for applications. That's what we did with the last city council resignation a couple of years ago. If we can come to a consensus, then we've come to a consensus. And if we don't come to a consensus, that's also okay. That's, that's the representative process, then we put it to the democratic process. And whatever the public elects on the primary, along with the primary election, is the person that will serve for six months.
Yes, if that's a motion, I second that very short motion.
Okay.
Well, let's get a little, yeah, that, I.
That's, that's my, that's my, that's my plan. Let's try Plan A, be okay with that plan not working, and if it doesn't work, go to Plan B.
Great. Mr. Roberts, any comments to the?
Yeah, first, as we're getting into the deeper one here coming up, I first wanted to thank the public for coming out and all of their comments and all of their being polite and just being positive about sharing their message. I think it's the epitome of what we have to deal with on the council is, you know, certainly we would want to make everybody happy, but I think you can all realize from the wide variety of opinions that that's not possible. So it is, it is hard on us up here. I think the comments about electing or putting people, appointing people that have already ran before would make a lot of sense, and I agree with that. But if we do the appointment, those people have the opportunity to come forward and to, and to put in their applications. And I would assume the council, I know myself, would give them extra consideration because they already have a certain level of city approval and city support, so. I think we should go forward with the appointment.
Great. Mr. Jenkins?
I too want to thank everyone for coming out. This, for all of us, has been, the word unusual is not strong enough. It's been a very strange time for us, and I know it is for you. I appreciate very much that you say what you think. That's what, you're there, and we're supposed to listen. So we're, I think we hear you. I favor appointment because of the time that we, one hundred and forty-four days after the vacancy occurs, we have to call an election, sixty days if we appoint, as the mayor pro tem said. Anyone can apply who meet the minimum qualifications, who are resident of the city, citizens over eighteen years of old, they can apply. I hope, and I believe we will, give serious consideration and listen to anyone and everyone who, who applies. Have them come in, interviewed, be interviewed, and give them that courtesy as they have in the past. And then, as Mr. Robbins says, if we make, if we come to a consensus, that will, that will happen. If not, we will go to a vote. Thank you, though.
Yes, and I would also agree a hundred percent that the, you know, if we can't get there and it doesn't slow down the process to get to the special election, it's the right thing to do. You know, we've had many people that have also been elected to this council. The public is trusted, that almost got elected. So I think there's a very real possibility we may be able to appoint somebody, and that will work better for the city to not be at a four-person council and really can move forward quicker. But if we can't, we can't, and then we can make that decision on November the eighteenth, or seventeenth, excuse me. So I guess if somebody would make the motion to the contrary.
Yeah, so because the act of doing a solicitation and reviewing candidates doesn't change when a special election would be held. That's a given fixed date, no matter what. Then I think it makes, I agree with your comment. I think as a result of that, it makes sense. We're not, we're not delaying an election potential time. That's when it has to be held. So with that, I propose that we direct city staff to solicit applications for appointment to fill the vacant city council seat. And with the annotation that if we, with the expectation that if we are unable to fill that within the timeframe, to then be prepared to call for an election.
Mr. Roberts, second?
I second, yeah.
That motion carries.
All right, and with that, we're going to now jump back to the top, which is going to be either looking to pass a motion to selecting a mayor, and if necessary, a mayor pro tem for the remainder of the twenty-twenty-five term, which is from now till December the ninth. So I will put this out to, again, as I was saying before, there's kind of two options here. If we put me into the mayor role, we're going to now have a vacant mayor pro tem, that we're going to need to consider that. We also could be at a two-two on both of them and decide that we're just moving forward through May ninth with a mayor pro tem, as we have really for the last two or three meetings now. So those are kind of where it's at. I am going to make a statement, which I really didn't plan to, but as much as I've kind of been falsely accused in the public comment today, and I am going to say, with my situation here, I was falsely arrested. That has actually been proven by the fact that the arrestable charge of assault was not even, I haven't even had a day in court, and the DA would not charge me that because I never assaulted a single person. I am absolutely innocent to the fullest degree. The person at question here has assaulted many people, including me, on two occasions, and I did report that both times. And it's, it's really unfortunate that people don't believe in the due process and won't give me my day in court to prove that, especially after the district attorney has already showed, before even a day in court has happened, that I was falsely arrested, because the only arrestable thing was assault, and he wasn't even willing to charge it before a day in court. So I'd ask the public, and especially this council, to not judge me upon that situation, and I'll leave it at that.
I, I, I know in the, all of the, I guess the word is excitement. There has been, we've had two incidents, two issues that have arisen that are very challenging for us as a community. My experience has only been for the time that I've been on this council for a year. Councilmember Mayor Protem Bass has been courteous, not only to us on the council, to me and others, but also very courteous to the public. In fact, I applaud him in that. And the second part of that is, as we know, and as we would want to be treated, that arrests happen, they may be good faith arrests, but you're not convicted in this country until you're convicted by, by a jury of your own peers. That has not occurred, and in fact, is the mayor pro tem, and I've read some of this also in the media. The main, an assault is not a battery, as you know. Battery is when you pop someone in the nose. Assault is something else. I don't want to play amateur lawyer, although I used to do that when I was city manager, but. But I'm, so let's, let's give someone their day in court. And I see no reason that the, who, the mayor pro tem has run fine meetings in the absence of the mayor, and, and state law and protocol says that in the absence of the mayor, the mayor pro tem continues to serve. We'll make a selection in December of officers, and I'm perfectly happy to wait until that time to do that, hopefully with a full council.
So as a, as a practical matter, I think, I think it's probably the best place to focus right now, is that if we take no action, if we, if we do nothing, or if we take no action, either because we choose to take no action, or we can't come to a consensus, and no action is taken, then Cody continues to serve in the, as mayor pro tem, serving in the role of mayor, by, by basically default. That is the reality. The challenge that that gives to us as an operational matter, strictly, not a political issue, not a public relationships issue, I'm not downplaying them. Those are real things, and they are fair. I'm just trying to address the operational practicals at this moment. And that is, we would have no mayor pro tem. We would, if Cody is unable to be present, if, you know, there's another emergency, and we don't have a secondary person, that we don't have a mayor pro tem at that moment. So it might make sense to just appoint Cody as mayor, because that's what he will do no matter what, and then appoint a mayor pro tem. The only alternative would be, I think we should, if we don't want to do that, then to appoint someone else as mayor, and then have, have a mayor pro tem. But if we don't have, if we do nothing, Cody stays as mayor or functions as mayor, but we lack a mayor pro tem. And I think we probably shouldn't lack a mayor pro tem, or someone serving in the role, I should say, as a mayor pro tem. And that's, that's an operational thing, because if we are, you know, if we're, we've had emergencies in our recent past, you know, and this is not a hypothetical or a, or a, you know, an unreasonable presumption that we might need someone serving as, in the role of a vice mayor, if Cody, in his role as acting mayor essentially, is unable to be there for some reason. That's not beyond the realm of plausibility.
Great, thank you, Mr. Robbins or Mr. Robert. Or do you mind if I ask Mr. Rob a quick question? In that event, if that were to be what happens, and let's say I have to recuse on an item, the process would be that the mayor would then appoint somebody to run the meeting? How would that work, basically?
I believe we have had to do that in the past, where there was a recusal and an absent council member. So that, it could be done that way, to answer your question.
I'm sure, excuse me, I'm sure this is not a universal opinion out there in the group, but we heard the comments a couple of times, and we've heard in the past that this is one of the best councils the town has ever had. I'm going to guess that that's a fairly rare comment to be made about any city council. I think that bodes well to Mr. Bass and his position. He's been, he's led several of the meetings. I do think, as Mr. Robbins said, that I think the best practice, or most practical solution would be to appoint somebody now, although we could go forward with just pro tem, but if, if Mayor Protem was not available, of course, we could run a meeting with three of us, but that's just not the best practice. It's not practical. I, I feel, I don't want to judge Mr. Bass here in this room. I have my personal opinions or whatever, but I don't think this is the place to have, even discuss it. I think we should move Mr. Bass into the mayor position and appoint a pro tem.
All right. Mr. Jenkins, any other comments? Okay, so then, again, I would also agree with that. I believe that, as I asked my council before, that would have been what we were doing, I think, in just the way of general law as well. So I think that does make sense. So if somebody wants to put up a motion to select the mayor, then we'll move in after Mayor Protem's seat is vacant to select a mayor pro tem.
I'll move to appoint Cody Bass mayor.
I'll, I second, since that role is filled by, in fact, because he's mayor.
De facto.
De facto.
That motion carries.
And we will go ahead and move on to the mayor pro tem selection, and then after that, we can take a quick break to reorganize. So Mayor Protem, I will go ahead and open it up to who would like to, Mr. Robbins, Mr. Roberts?
You put your hand up first.
Back to the comments that we have a great council, at least to some people, believing that. I certainly don't view myself as any better council person than the rest of you guys that are, I feel are excellent. I do feel a lot of my background in large corporations and large committees and things would, would make me a better person to be running meetings than the other two council persons.
Yeah, I've, I've been on council now for three years, so I actually have the experience of how council functions. I also understand staff in deep detail at this point, so I'd like to put my name forward for Mayor Protem.
Great. Mr. Jenkins?
I'm not in favor of making a change in appointing a mayor pro tem. So I, I have nothing just bad to say about either parties. I don't think this matter needed to be on the agenda. I conveyed that to the city manager and the city attorney. I, I told them that the prerogative to do this was ours, to make a decision whether to do it, and since under protocols that we put matters on the agenda that relate to the politics of the city, not, not staff. So I'm not inclined to, to make any further changes, because those changes will be coming up anyway in December. So that's, that's where I come from.
All right. I definitely agree with Mr. Roberts and Mr. Robbins. I, I think that we all absolutely can serve in the role, and we're all capable. It's not that, that, you know, without a doubt, Mr. Robbins has been here and has the seniority for the role. Mr. Roberts, no doubt, has the ability to do the role, but has been here a less amount of time. And again, we could be at an issue here that we, we do need a fifth person to get through this side of it. And I, if that is the case, I, I don't want to necessarily put us voting against one another, because really, I wouldn't vote against either one of you in this situation. And, and I don't want to really put myself in that way, in a sense. So I hear Mr. Jenkins's point to this. There is a very real point, though, of, of what we just did, to get a Mayor Pro Tem in place, because it does give experience for the next mayor. It does things that, that there's a real reason that process exists. So I'm, again, I can kind of say that I, in a way, agree with Mr. Jenkins, almost let's wait for a fifth person. But then again, I also think that for what we just did, by appointing me mayor allows it, and it may be, I mean, I guess maybe we should see if we have three votes one way or the other, or maybe we don't even need to motion it. It's just, do we, you know, would you basically vote for Mr. Robbins, or Mr. Roberts as mayor? And if you wouldn't, then, or Mayor Pro Tem, excuse me, if you wouldn't, then we really don't have the votes to go forward, and I think we can just leave it as it is.
I, I have nothing ill to say about either party. I think I tried to make this point earlier before the agenda was set. We, we have protocols in place. I don't want there to be an assumption made, that if there is a Mayor Pro Tem, that that will be the person who will necessarily be the mayor next year. The council will have to make that decision in December. I would hope that there is a full council, so that that decision can be made by a full council, not by a partial council. So based on that, I'm, I'm not prepared to, I support both of you as we, as, 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 as my colleagues, but I don't, I don't support making that appointment. I don't think it's needed. And, and, and I think the fact that it's on the agenda creates issues that I think we could have avoided. I'll just leave it at that.
So the point I'll make is that we're going to end up at two-two either way on this, but we can try to motion it up and see if you just want to put the vote out. It's up to you guys to make that motion.
I would prefer not to vote against either a party. I would prefer not to do that.
And, and in a way, that's kind of why I wanted to go through this talk, to see if we already know we're at two-two, so we don't, but if, if we, if you guys are, because I think we've clearly heard from, and you're clearly not going to vote against yourself to vote him, and he's not going to vote for you, and now we're at two-two, and so that becomes an issue. If you follow what I'm saying? But if you would like to make, you know, that, that's just, I think, where this is landing, from what I can see. And then in December ninth, the, the hope is really by December ninth, if we did get to an appointment on November the seventeenth, we would then put that person on the council. We would be at a five-person council. December the ninth, this process will come back, and at that point, we have a three-person vote to appoint both positions. So...
And I would hope, Mr. Mayor, whoever is appointed, would be a unanimous vote of the council, to show unanimity. And therefore, if, if I were to have to vote, if there was the motion, I would abstain. And since it's, there's no majority opinion, the abstention would effectively not, would not count either way, I think, as I understand the rule.
So...
I would like to make a motion. I motion that we put off selecting a Mayor Pro Tem until the council's fully set. I'll fully seated.
All right, we have a motion. One second.
I'm sorry. Something is going on with my voting system. It's not showing. So Mr. Jenkins seconded?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And I will just do, so this was to postpone the Pro Tem. And I will just do a verbal vote, in lack of having this working properly. Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Robbins?
No.
Mayor Bass?
Yes.
That motion carries.
So we are going to take a, what a time, is it seven o'clock already? Wow. We will go ahead and take a 10-minute break, and we will see everybody back here at 7:15.
All right. Thank you all. We are gonna go ahead and call this meeting back to order. If you guys could, please, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting back to order. We are moving on to, excuse me, if you guys would not mind, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Uh, this is gonna be our public's communication that is for topics that are not on this agenda. Um, I would just like to remind the public that the topic that we did just have on the agenda, um, is, is that was the time for public comment that are directed towards those issues. Uh, this is the public comment for things that are not on the agenda. So I would just like everybody to please keep that in mind. We had the opportunity for, uh, the item number one. Um, so this is for any topic not listed. Comments shall be limited to four minutes and in accordance with the Brown Act, the city council cannot deliberate or vote on any matter raised under public communications, but may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed. So with that, I will look for anybody in the room, uh, that would like to give public comment. Yes, sir, come forward.
Juan, and I'm fully aware the council cannot respond under non-agenda item. And what I'm reading from what I know is a non-agenda item, as is from the press, and the topic is Cody Bass reaches out to the South Lake Tahoe commu- community. And I'll resume to read here to the community and write in to address the citizens arrest that took place in Douglas County, Nevada on September 25th. And, yes?
The only thing is, as I was stating before, kinda some of this does relate to our last item. I don't mind, I mean-
Oh, yeah, you're right. Yeah, that's fine. I'm fine with that, yeah.
I'll look to the city attorney, but it seems like this is pretty to the last item, and I'll look to her for her opinion.
It sounds like it might be something that was already covered, but-
That's fine with me. I thought I'd try it out, but yeah, it's fine.
I do appreciate the comments a hundred percent. I just, I wanna keep us all kind of in the same.
I am familiar with that stuff. Yeah, you're right.
But if you, if there's anything else, you've got four minutes. Are you sure?
Yeah, I have experience doing this in other cities, too.
You got the floor. All right. I appreciate you. Thank you, sir.
I've done this more than enough.
All right. Thank you so much. Yes. There you go. Yeah, you could.
Happy birthday.
Nice. Yes, Mr. Aaron.
Oh, there's probably as much as you would not like me to ask this question, Cody, but this is what the city wants to know. Did you say I will have you killed to that bouncer? Or was it in the video?
Again, I think you're moving back into the, as the previous speaker, uh, the, the time for comment on this was in the beginning, and I'm also not in any way able to respond to your comments, but this is for public comments for things not on the agenda. So if you'd like to speak to something that's not listed on our agenda tonight, you have four minutes.
Well, then let me just talk about, um, for four and a half, five years, I've been here fighting against the city decisions on cell towers, trying to protect my community. Five years ago, when someone came in from, I think they were from Portugal, the girl was so poetic, what she said is, "Why are you trying to kill us? We don't need the cell towers everywhere." And I know none of this is on the agenda, but it's like you guys have been red stamping them, red stamping them. You know, the FCC has already been informed, and they're working on things behind the scenes. I'm not gonna sit there and voice any names or anything like that, but stuff's happening, um, way behind the scenes, because it's been all around here. It seems that the city council here in South Lake Tahoe is tied to the TRPA. Where are all the other surrounding communities' representatives? I would like to know. Um, with Mayor Wallace showing that she robbed the church, I believe she's got her hands in so many different purses and so many different contracts that could be going on with low-income housing, all these new things that are going on, the cell towers. Is someone being paid? We need to have a full audit of everybody. Let all the chips fall where they may. And if we're all guilty, it may come out. And if we're not, then that will come out. But this city deserves better. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Jenkins, go right ahead. If you don't mind, Mr. Lowberg.
I would just like to say to Mr. Aaron, who I know is very concerned and focused on this issue, as I think many of us are, not only this, but microplastics, but just, just to say that, uh, I'm waiting for an issue to come before us, before this new, the, the new members of the council, um, on, on that relate to safety of cell towers and others. I'm waiting for that opportunity, uh, to, to, um, hear that matter and, um, and, um, ask some tough questions about it. But I appreciate the work that you've done, Mr. Aaron, in, uh, in trying to protect the health of our community.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Lowberg.
Yes, Scott Lowberg, South Lake Tahoe. Um, I know Heavenly's on the agenda later. Uh, this is kind of a parallel to that, if I may. Okay. Um, I urge that, uh, the ownership of Heavenly take a page from Disneyland when they opened Disney World and created their own city and their own government and their own rules and kept the money there and were able to enhance their own facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowberg. Uh, yes, please come forward.
Hello, my name's Samantha. Um, I'm coming to you guys because, um, there is an issue with parking in the Heavenly Village. Um, I am a general manager of the baked bear in the Heavenly Village. Um, I work there. Um, I, there's no parking for any employees. Makes it hard for hiring people, keeping good people. Um, I went there and I paid, um, I parked on the street by the Marriott, um, on tramway. I paid on the app, and I still ended up with a ticket, even though I paid during that time. Um, the parking pass to park at the garage is $500 for six months, which is not horrible, but you're asked, we're asking people who to work to pay for parking, which makes, is a little, it's hard, especially in the economy that this city is in. So I'm asking to try to start the change, so maybe we could figure out some solution to make it easier for employees to go to work and make a living for their families. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Samantha. Anybody else? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Hi again. Um, is this cell tower thing for real? Like, it's a real question? Because, um, I'm sorry, I'm a network engineer, and there's certain things called megahertz, gigahertz, and so forth. And up here, we're at 6,200 feet, so we're closer to the sun. We get more X-rays, okay? We get gamma rays that blow through the earth that are unstoppable at the speed of light. And we've got 60-hertz lights, and we're still debating 5 gigahertz? Well, if that was the case, that cell towers cause problems, just carrying this in your pocket would cause problems, 'cause it's on the same frequency. I mean, I, it's physics. There's, it's not, you know, it's not voodoo, and it's not anything like that. I mean, you'd have to get rid of microwave ovens. You'd have to get rid of your remotes and your, at your, in your TVs. Uh, your Roku box probably runs on the same frequency, 5.8 gigahertz or 2.4. So I'm just kinda surprised that we're talking about cell towers when they've got, we've got a few up here. I mean, as a matter of fact, they, I thought they pulled the one for, it was T-Mobile over by the high school, right? They moved it. Um, but down in LA, they're every three miles, you know, along the freeways, every three miles. So if there was a problem, you'd have masses of people that were keeling over. I mean, so I don't know. Just, just my two cents, if you really wanna point fingers at something, you can point fingers at X-rays and gamma rays, because those things have always been around since the sun was created. All right? Just my-
Thank you. And just to answer your question, no, they are currently not on our agenda.
Oh, say again?
Just to answer your question, no, they are currently not on our agenda for consideration. I just wanted to answer that question for you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Kathy Zollinger from the Bear League, South Lake Tahoe. It was suggested by one of our citizens, um, that South Lake Tahoe become a bear sanctuary city. Upon hearing this suggestion, Barely created a proclamation that would do just that. This was sent to the city council and the city manager this last weekend to review, and I provided copies today to the city clerk. On your agenda, you have a land acknowledgement that states, "Since the beginning of time and for thousands of years before the arrival of any other people, the Washoe lived here and cared for this place with values and intention that we can learn from. The same is true of bears. They have been here for thousands of years, and we can learn from them as well." South Lake Tahoe has an opportunity to serve as a positive example to bear communities across the world of how a community can come together to protect its bear population through education and non-lethal management. Let's be leaders in this area. We ask for your consideration supporting this proclamation.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Uh, yes, go right ahead. Yes, come, so, no, you're fine, go.
Hi, Rebecca Harvard. Um, I'm here as a business owner in the Heavenly Village to talk about the parking situation. Um, I was working with the past police chief before the, our new one came in, haven't met you yet, nice to meet you, um, that we were looking to possibly put in some 10 to 15-minute parking spaces in the back. We kinda did a whole entire thing where that people came out and took a look, and it ended up being a bigger project than expected, that they would have to do ADA parking spaces, they would have to do a whole bunch of tearing up that parking lot where the transportation center is, and be able to add these five-minute, five, five, 10-minute parking spaces to be able to allow more, um, customers to come up into the Heavenly Village to do a quick pickup. I'm looking to bring in another business up there, and I know that having a five-minute, our locals don't like to come down to the village. It's fact. And when I hear people talking about that, about not being able to go down there and just be, do a quick parking, come up, grab their baked bear ice cream sandwich, or be able to grab their juice from the juice it up, they don't do it because they just, they can't. Um, and so I was looking at just five to 10-minute, uh, parking spots, but if we can't do that and make an adjustment, is there any way to be able to allow those paid parking spots that are along the side of the Marriott to be allowed for staff or permit, or permit parking? Um, I don't have a lot of staff members that have cars, but when I come down, we made a donation of 100 smoothies to the high school yesterday. And when we got done making our smoothies to go and make the delivery, I come down and my general manager has a parking ticket on her car that her, um, permit that she bought, she paid for, um, was within the timeframe, and she should not have gotten a ticket. And to hear that she went to, um, the police, the police said you have to do this, um, this, you know, go online and file this and, uh, and that then they said, well, it'll probably be denied, but you can go ahead and give it a try. It's like, you know, I'm gonna go ahead and pay that ticket for her because she was on, doing work. And I'm not opposed to buying a $500 parking permit that is for the, um, parking area down there, but what if it's full and they're doing the Halloween event and there's no parking? I've paid for a parking spot, but now there's no parking and my staff can't park there. So now I am running into a lot of different things that are coming up where staff members, I have a staff member who has a car who lives in Myers. He drives out, he's my assistant manager, he parks at one of our other employees' houses a mile away and walks into work. Um, I brought this up before, and I'm like, and people are like, oh, just have them park at the casinos. Well, now the casinos are charging for parking. And then why am I telling my staff to park in another state? I shouldn't have to do that. They should be allowed to park where they can safely walk to work. My general manager, Sam Mantha here, she has a six-month-old child. So now she's gotta get the child out of the car, put her in the car seat, get her in the stroller, and then go up and walk a mile to come to work? It's, it just doesn't seem like it's a feasible thing that's sustainable. We need to be able to take care of our employees. We want our employees to work. We want our locals to come to work. We've got a lot of great employees out there. They just need help. We also need to look at expanding the Lake Link. The Lake Link is great, but when my employees have to call an hour before to get a ride to come to work, it's not feasible. We've gotta be able to expand that program and be able to allow employees to get a way to get to work. And to get to work on time and not call in and say, "Hey, I'm running late 'cause Lake Link's late," you know? Um, so if we, if there is a way to possibly get this to be an agenda item in the near future, it would be something that would be very greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Moser.
Ed Moser, South Lake Tahoe. Um, just real, real quick on, on the previous speaker's comments there. I was at the meeting when the parking garage was authorized there, the funding for that way back, uh, you know, and I had a comment about, uh, you know, Mr. Castillo has like 40-something businesses there and didn't have to provide a single parking space. Uh, so that's the problem from day one. So, uh, it goes way back. Um, I'd like to just start out here with a joke that I heard back in, um, 1980s, mid-1980s, 85 or so, Tati Cabaret comedian Emo Phillips. And, um, he said that when he was a young boy there, and, and he wandered a bicycle really bad. And, uh, so his parents said, "Well, you know, pray, pray for it. When you go to bed tonight and say your prayers, pray for the bicycle, that you want a bicycle. Maybe God will answer your prayers." So he prays, prays five or 10 minutes for the bicycle and goes to bed, gets up in the morning, says, "Maybe I should pray in the morning, too." So he prays in the morning, prays the next night. This goes on for several days. And then he goes to his parents and he says, "Hey, you know, I've been praying for several days, morning and night, and I haven't gotten my bicycle." And so they said, "Well, keep on praying," you know, and, and doesn't, things don't always happen overnight. Now the week goes by, and he says, "Then I saw the picture. So I went out and stole a bicycle and then prayed for forgiveness." Um, this is some, this is a picture of, um, three stained glass windows in, uh, by where I grew up, beautiful stained glass windows at a First Presbyterian Church of Asbury Park, New Jersey, founded in 1879. And, uh, my neighbor and best friend and his mother was one of the first women, uh, in the state and in central New Jersey and in the state, reaching levels that first woman appointed to this, that, and several levels up, uh, there in the church, that, uh, she was a trendsetter there, uh, for, for other women. And, uh, so we were very close, and she was kinda like a second mother to me. But anyway, her husband died back in 1987, and, uh, so I, I, I made a donation to him. It says, uh, for, they wanna put a stained glass window for him. And it says, this card says, "Dear Edward, the family of," the name gratefully acknowledges your gift to the stained glass window fund of the Presbyterian Church on the Hill, Ocean, New Jersey. A window depicting the nativity will be installed in his memory. This will take about a year, but will be a lasting memory. We will advise you when it is completed." And of course, it was completed. I went back a few years later and, and, and got to see it. So, uh, you know, some people steal from their church and others contribute. And you're not meant to steal people's contributions, uh, especially when they were hurting and had gone through a fire and, and everything that, the pain and suffering that that church and congregation had- and congregation had been through previously. So, you know, there's no sympathy, no empathy there for Ms. Wallace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Yes, Mr. Messina.
John Messina again. Now that we've hopefully moved past all the scandal, it's amazing that the media is gone. It's too bad they don't show up and cover our regular sessions so people would know what's going on in this city. Anyhow, we've been, now that we're past that, we've been a tight-knit community that supports our neighbors and I hope we can focus on helping the Presbyterian Church by raising funds to help compensate for their losses. I know that they're working on setting up a fund where people can donate to the church specifically to help recover from the losses. And when this comes out, I hope everybody will contribute like we do as neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Messina. Mr. Soderstone? Yes?
Melissa Soderstone, South Lake Tahoe. I want to thank you guys first for your calmness today. I want to echo what Kathy Zollinger of the Bear League said about the bear sanctuary city. I think the idea is, is not to say that, you know, that we don't need to work with the agencies. I think it's that we need to find something that is going to incentivize people to do the right thing because we're still out there every day following hope and bounds, sometimes nine hours a day. You know, they're still alive. It's been really exhausting and, you know, every day it's still trash everywhere, people leaving dog food in their gar, in their garages, and their garage is open. And it's not just hope and bounds doing this, it's all the bears in the community. So I really want you to consider the bear sanctuary city. It's a really cool idea and would not preclude us from dealing with true problem bears. But what we're seeing now is that there's no way to verify that. They're just, you know, indiscriminately killing mother bears because all our mother bears are doing this and this would be the third bear this year, obviously emotional. I also want to speak to the conservancy and Forest Service thinning projects that are going on. I would love to tour these sites with you. It's absolutely horrific what they've done. They've left no underbrush at all for our bears to forage on. There is slash that was, I mean, it's, I have pictures of just slash piles this high off the ground, just bushes that were mowed down and left to just be an even greater fire hazard than they were before. We know that dense forests actually burn much less hot than thinned forests and we are just seeing the decimation of entire ecosystems with no defensible space work being done at all. We really need the funds that are being given to CTC, being given to the Forest Service, being given to TRPA to do these so-called thinning projects, to be focused on the community defensible space work instead. We needed to go to our local fire department, we need to go to tree trimming companies, go to landscapers, go to roofing companies to get the work done at a community-wide level because we've seen time and time again that no amount of thinning is going to protect our community from a wind-driven fire. And again, I would love to tour these thinning projects with you. It's absolutely horrific. I've seen trees that were, you know, some of our oldest trees in the basin remaining that are being logged right now, live, healthy trees, no reason to be logging them at all. And now that we do not have a mayor that is a member of a patriots group and a proud, awful MAGA person, I would love that we come forward with a proclamation saying that we support the immigrant community in our, here, that we support our Latino community, that we support immigrants, that we are not going to be working directly with ICE, that we are not okay with what's going on to our immigrant population right now, and the same goes for Palestine, that we make sure that our city is not investing in genocide. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Soderstone. Sure, Mr. Miller? Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Miller's the closest one, so take Mr. Miller first.
Hi. Hello, council members and interested public. I'm Alan Miller, a professional civil and environmental engineer with an extensive regulatory background, here to speak and follow up my appearance before you last May in support of a long letter I wrote as public comment to our community. In that, I recommended the city attorney be fired and resignations from the city council members, city manager, and city clerk be given for collusion and criminal conspiracy to violate the laws, the city code specifically, both internally among yourselves and together with TRPA. This matter concerns an application for an appeal hearing on a city planning commission decision which was illegally denied to me last May by all the city officers and elected officials teaming up in criminal conspiracy to deprive me of my right to an appeal hearing. My civil rights were stolen. The phony legal basis for this denial was an illegal memorandum of agreement with TRPA propped up by the city attorney to the detriment of the citizens and taxpayers. The city can't act beyond legal authority, don a TRPA hat, and purport to issue and enforce TRPA permits. The city's intent with that is to inviolate the laws in light of the unaddressed comments I've repeatedly put forward. You all sold the city into servitude to TRPA as a contract hoe, a hearings officer, just like it sounds, with misuse of public funds to subsidize TRPA. That is not allowed and is why you conspired to deny me a hearing to cover up the facts in your conspiracies with TRPA as a team, if you could. You have all violated the public trust, the state and federal constitutions, and many federal, state, and local laws on the advice of the city attorney at your helm. She's also responsible for over $1.4 million in unconstitutional Measure T legal disasters for the city taxpayers, serves at the pleasure of the city council, and should be fired. But you are ultimately responsible, council members, and you have violated your oaths and all that is right as committed criminals. You're serving an opaque and illegal agenda enacted without public awareness. I therefore see no further use for any of you in public service. None could read and follow the city code, and for that and other reasons, I ask you to step down as criminals and betrayers of the people. In any case, I have no trust or confidence in any of you to follow the laws or do anything else right. You've sold your integrity and city to TRPA on the cheap, and for what? To hasten the destruction of Lake Tahoe water quality with illegal permitting procedures because this program cuts across many projects in the city. The illegal MOU must be discarded. That will end the criminal conspiracies for which you and the taxpayers remain potentially liable. You continue them at personal peril. Why? See my written comments in the public records of the city and TRPA. For your criminally poor judgment, you must resign. And I have some copies at the back of the room if you want to see my other comments.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Jenkins, would you like to make a comment?
I want to point out that we are the only elected governmental body wholly within the boundaries of TRPA, and I have consistently questioned their authority vis-à-vis our authority on planning issues. And as you'll recall, Mr. Miller, when this issue came up on the appeal, I wrote to you and to others my concerns because of the apparent fact that, I'm not asking you for comment, you've had your comments, but let me, let me make mine because you made yours. I, I pointed out that even TRPA said that the appeal power was here in the city, not to TRPA from the planning commission. I pointed that out. And so, I don't think that, I don't think any of my colleagues are conspiring with any of these people. I certainly like to keep the decision-making, as you've suggested, within the city. And, and to the point that we need to review that relationship, there is ongoing conversation right now with TRPA on those kinds of relationships. But I wasn't elected by any of them and, and I raised the issue that you raised with staff, with, with our staff and with the council in regard to that. And I understand your concern. I want to see us gain as much power back because I, I still have uncertainty about who rules here, and I've made that point many times. Thank you, though, for your comments. Thanks for your directness.
Mr. Exine? Oh, not Mr., sorry. Mr. Spiel? Jeez, you guys both share a first name.
Different Nick here. No troubles at all. Hello, everybody. My name is Nick Spiel. I just wanted to take advantage of the excellent turnout we have tonight to give a quick plug for our improving public transit here in South Lake Tahoe. We have a free bus that runs every 30 minutes across town, goes straight to Heavenly Village. And now we've got a new service that extends that until after midnight on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturday night. And really, this only works if people use it. And so I wanted to give this plug to encourage more people to ride public transit, encourage your employees, it's a great way to get to work, or if you're going out to the event center at night in Heavenly Village, it's a great way to get home. Our next thing that we're really working on is trying to extend that route over to Kingsbury. There's a, there's a parking garage there that's free, and so if that bus route goes to Kingsbury, then people who are coming, especially from the Nevada side, can park for free at that parking garage and then take the bus across town anywhere they want to work. And so, expanding parking options, expanding transportation options, I hope everyone will give it a try. You can plan your trip on Google Maps. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Mr. Spiel. Yes, Mr. Asbury?
Hello, Eric Asbury here again for the record. That was a nice speech by Nick Spiel. I was kind of talking about the alternate transportation. I wanted to talk about maybe further consideration for the city council to work with the Lake Tahoe Bicycle Coalition. I recently had the pleasure of volunteering at their bike valet over at Oktoberfest and it was a great experience, very rewarding. And, you know, I would encourage other people that want to kind of look for places to donate, volunteer their time in the community to seek that organization out. It coincides with, you know, people getting outdoors, which can be healthy, you know, promoting other alternate ways of transportation. And a big thing when people are thinking about riding bikes to, from point A to point B, maybe they go to point B, they lock their bikes and they get it stolen. And so this is a really secure way. It was, it's totally donation-based, so there was, there's no fee for the service and people would donate on their own accord, you know, just tip, very, you know, they're like, "Wow, it's almost too good to be true." So, you know, the, you know, the season for biking is kind of coming to a close, but, you know, going forth, I would say that, you know, that's an organization to kind of look at. Along with that, I've talked about it in the past, but the flashing crosswalks, I know Caltrans has been going ahead and installing a lot of them throughout Highway 50. There's mixed, you know, things going on with that, you know, opinions on that, and then the roundabouts. But there's a main bikeway that goes from, you know, from Camp Ridge through town to State Line and hopefully, you know, all the way to State Line. There's two busy intersections, one at Black Bart, one at Tahoe Keys and Eloise. And so that's something that the city would have, you know, an opportunity to do those flashing crosswalks, not a stoplight, but, you know, right now there's, there's not even any lines, people, you know, that are unaware, you know, we have a high tourist, you know, population coming through here, they're not aware of the bike routes, but, you know, for adding towards safety, we had that tragedy that happened in North Upper Truckee earlier this year that was, you know, kind of unfortunate near Sawmill. But, so yeah, the flashing crosswalks. And then as far as I was, it was kind of heartbreaking to hear about the situation with the mayor and her connection with the Presbyterian Church, you know, and the lost funds. I've been working with the pastor there to go ahead and find a way that the public can go ahead and, and, you know, donate without, you know, complication or whatever, you know, they had a PayPal thing, but we're, we're working on getting, you know, like kind of a solidified way that they can go ahead and it could be used as, they are a nonprofit, so it could be used as a tax deduction if people want to make the church whole. Thank you for your, your time. Thank you.
Anybody else in the room that would like to give a public comment on something not on the agenda? Yes, please come forward.
Laura Kosky. I was appointed by President Trump, so I represent the fourth district here in Lake Tahoe. I just want to basically tell the community here how we operate. Kevin Kiley is out of Rockland, so he has this district as well, and he's in Washington, DC. I basically am the eyes and I report back to President Trump and then Kevin Kiley mostly. Working with Carl DiMaggio as well. We are not just mega, we are community, and that is our number-one concern. And President Trump and Kevin Kiley have made it well aware that we're here for the community and they're going to fund us in any way they need to, to make sure that we're a safe community. There's 30 million tourists that come through Tahoe. It's an exorbitant amount of money that's coming through here, and so our budgets are well-filled or whatnot, you want to say. This is the third polluted lake in Lake, Lake Tahoe is. It could easily slide into first place if we don't get a hold of the microplastics and the amount of tourist trash in the summertime. There's a lot of concerns. Obviously, I've brought up my concerns over and over and over, and I will continue to do so. We definitely need trail work. You know, you can't have the tourists climb in Talik and have all these boulders in the middle, middle of the trail. There's a lot of elderly still out there hiking and just these little basic things need to be addressed as well as, obviously, I keep talking about the motorcycles and cyclists and the scooters because they're getting hit out there. The nurses have made their concerns and they do not want that hospital going in at State Line. They're going to lose their wages now loaned, their, the care is excellent from nurses' ratio to patients, and they haven't had their contract renewed over nine years. I just want to, you know, there's just so mu, so many concerns. Obviously, I've had some friends that died on the lake and Joseph Pickles had his boat capsized. I had talked about having more Coast Guard, more eyes on the lake and boycotting the EVs that blow up on the lake and have to self-extinguish themselves. Takes over 60 minutes for the particles on those batteries to extinguish themselves. So, basically, I just want to say to the community, if you have concerns, I'm on Rumble, Keepfox, you can look me up, and as well as Kevin Kiley, and as well as even President Trump, and your governors, Joe Lombardo and Newsom will listen, as well as a lot of Democrats are really paying attention to Tahoe. And they've reached out to me and they made it very serious, seriously and concerned of what's going on up here, and they're willing to help out. And so I'm really hoping with the joint effort that we start attacking all these concerns that we have. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anybody else in the room that would like to give a public comment on something not on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we will go to Zoom.
There are no hands raised on our Zoom platform, but I did want to note for the record, on this item, we did receive written public comment from Mr. Miller and Ms. Zollinger. And then I failed to mention, but that on item number one, we did receive public comments from Johnson, Noble, Reagan, and Schoenfeldt. And that is all the public comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Blankenship. All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and move into city commission reports. Mr. Gregor, attorney commissioners here, yes? Natalia, thank you.
It's going to be good afternoon, but it's good evening, council members. My name is Natalia Viatchorek and I am currently serving as the chair of the planning commission. After hearing multiple denial appeals, we decided to add an agenda item at our last commission meeting to discuss the VHR ordinance and the impacts it has had on our community. As we are currently the reviewing and decision-making body for VHR permit denial or revocation appeals, we have heard from many owners who list the same grievances. The way the rules have been written and as they currently stand have created some confusion and caused us, the commissioners, to struggle with the decisions we're making and their long-term effects. The following are our recommendations, which we hope the council will take into consideration when modifying or amending the VHR ordinance. One, one thing that keeps coming up is the buffer zone, and we understand that this is something already under consideration, and we would like the council to keep in mind that many of the applications which were denied on the basis of the buffer only were submitted within the priority round, and those owners were typically those whose rentals were in good standing and had no other violations. We suggest that these owners are also given priority in a new application round should the buffer rule be eliminated. Number two, the forever ban is something that we have struggled with as a ruling body. Number two, the forever ban is something that we have struggled with as a ruling body. There's currently no recourse for owners who have had three violations, regardless of whether they're administrative or more significant in nature. We would like to suggest that the council consider a number of options, such as citation levels, since administrative citations are generally not as impactful as consistent noise, trash, et cetera. We feel that owners should have the ability to address citations, especially administrative ones, within a certain time limit and potentially have the citation removed if addressed quickly. Also, we recommend that the council consider ways in which owners can continue to rent after a certain amount of time. It is our understanding that the current hosted rental ordinance bans hosts for one year after three citations. We think a similar approach should be considered for VHR citations. Lastly, we feel a clarification should be made regarding who the citations are for, the owner or the property. Our thought is that an owner with multiple violations could sell the property by another and continue renting without penalty. Alternatively, if a property is sold and the new owner also wants to rent it, but the citations are attached to the property, it would be unfair to the new owner. Number three, in a similar vein, both the owner and tenant can be cited, and the citations count against the owner either way. Typically, both receive the notice, and the owner is expected to be aware that a tenant received the citation as well. However, if only a tenant is cited, the owner is not necessarily informed. In those cases, the citation can go unpaid and stay on record without the owner being aware of it. We suggest eliminating the third-party citations, and it should be owner's responsibility to address all violations. Four, we feel that the timing of citations has been a struggle. It's our understanding that under the current system, the enforcement officers are able to call, text, and email an owner regarding the violation in real time. The Planning Commission, however, has received multiple complaints regarding mailed violation notices which were not received in a timely manner, and since violations can be administered every day, they can add up very quickly before the owner even knows about them. We're not sure whether this is a solved problem, but wanted to bring it to the council's attention. Finally, we would like to encourage owners to self-report known violations, such as when they're aware of extra cars on the property, trash being left out, et cetera. Currently, if an owner self-reports and an enforcement officer goes to address the problem, they can still give a citation to the owner or potentially just the tenant without the owner knowing about it. This discourages the practice, as it's not in the owner's best interest to say anything. Better to hope that neighbors don't report the violation. We had one appellant mention they were certain that if they self-reported, the citation would not be counted against them. We're not sure if this is the best way to address the issue, but felt it was something important for you to consider. These five suggestions are what has come of the Planning Commission's discussion, and we hope that it helps you as you deliberate on the matter. Thank you again for your time, and I wish you all the best with the rest of the agenda tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Great, thank you, Natalia. Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you for your report. I thought it was well-done, and I appreciate, as I think we all do, the role of the Planning Commission in our city, and I'd like to see the commission be engaged in advisory matters to us, because that's the role that's contemplated in state laws, you know. Are the recommendations that you made to us tonight verbally, are they available? Will you provide those to us? Oh, you have, thank you so much.
Yes, I figured it would be a lot. I only have three, so I will make copies before we get to that item, so you can all get it.
I have one more that I'm happy to.
Oh, okay.
And let me just say this, that in regard to our staff, what our staff is doing is implementing to the best of their ability the rules that we have adopted or have been adopted in the past by the council. They're doing the best to enforce what we've created, or predecessors have created. So, please be gentle with our staff, because they're just doing what we ask them to do. Your point, though, is that if there are changes that are needed, then that's something that we have to consider, and that's why we appreciate, or at least, and I know we all do, appreciate what you're presenting to us as intel on these matters. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, and thank you so much, Natalia, for coming tonight.
Of course, yeah, have a great night, guys.
Thank you. All right, let's see, any other city commissioners? Wow, this is just a first city commission report, so we're not in public comment. You are, that's right, you are. Sorry, Mr. Messina, my apologies. You were on the, you're on the aging committee, I'm sorry. It's been a long, yeah, not even a long night yet.
John Messina, speaking for myself, but I'm on the commission on aging. They're currently trying to do more reach-out in education for health benefits for the seniors, and we have speakers that can come to groups and organizations and do a presentation to help educate people. And if anybody knows who has a group like that and would like us to speak, they should contact me, and I will try and help arrange someone to come out and speak for them. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Jenkins.
Mr. Messina, you know that this is not partisan talk, but I've received something that there's a town hall on Medicare on the 28th that the congressman is holding, where people can call in, they'll have experts there. I'm sure staff has the specifics on how you get there, but I know I saw that today in preparation. So, the 28th, there's a town hall. When I say town hall, I believe it's not in person, but it's a telephone-in, and maybe that would be of use to you and find work that you're doing to inform seniors. Maybe we can get some information to you about that town hall from the congressman.
And I appreciate that. We do have the Senior Inc., who is providing the services at the senior center, has a newsletter and email list, and I'll try and get it out to them.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, things like that, I appreciate coming in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messina. All right, I don't believe I see any other city commissioners, so I believe we will go ahead and move on to our consent agenda.
What a motion.
Well, first, I'll look to my council, is there any items that anybody would like to pull off consent? Mr. Robbins, nothing? Mr. Roberts, nothing? All right, with that, we'll go ahead and open up the consent agenda for public comment for anybody in the room that would like to give a public comment on anything on the consent agenda. Yes, go ahead and come forward.
Actually, more of a question. I think item 11 is a separate thing, right? It's away from the consent?
It'll be, yep, that's right. That'll come next.
Never mind, they have nothing on consent agenda.
Okay, cool. Yeah, it'll be right up next.
Yeah, it does.
All right, let's see, anybody else that would like to give comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to Zoom.
Yeah, I do see one hand raised. Ms. Ballard.
Hi, everyone. I wanted to actually give a quick commission update for the act.
So sorry, Ms. Ballard, go right ahead.
That's okay. I just wanted to let you know, we have our plan for the next year, and one of the things we're really looking forward to is the heavenly art exhibit that's going to be put up in the airport for the next few months. We have a great team of commissioners, we all work really well together, and I really appreciate the city council's support. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ballard. There's no additional comments.
All right, great. With that, we can bring back the consent agenda for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the city council approve the consent calendar items two through 10 as written in the agenda, on the agenda packet.
That motion unanimously carries.
Great, all right, so we were moving into our public hearing. This is item number 11. I will put it up to my council. It's now 8:10. Would you like to take a short break?
Let me do public comment first.
On the item and then take a break? It's usually dust.
Or do the report, public comment, and then a break, just because we've got people here that want to comment, and it's already late.
They have urgent needs.
Yeah, I think five, just like, just a 10, just a small one.
Done.
Okay, we're going to take a small break, and then I believe we will get through the rest of the three items on our agenda. We will come back at 8:20. All right, we are going to call this meeting back to order. It is now 8:20. We are moving on to our public hearing, item number 11. This is an ordinance amending the vacation home rental regulations to remove 150-foot buffer and make other changes. So, we are going to start this item off with Mrs. Stroud. So we are going to start this item off with Mrs. Stroud.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Heather Stroud, City Attorney, and I am here to present this item to you that is a continuation from the discussion that we had on September ninth. So on June seventeenth of this year, council adopted ordinance number two thousand twenty-five twelve hundred, which amended the vacation home rental provisions in our city code to allow VHRs in residential areas and regulate them. On September ninth, City Council asked that we bring back further amendments to this ordinance. And there are two versions for council to consider according to that direction from September ninth, and I will go through what's in each version. Version one would remove the one hundred and fifty foot buffer between VHR properties outside of the tourist core area plan and replace that buffer with a cap of no more than twelve hundred VHR permits in residential areas. It would require a minimum age of twenty-five to rent a VHR. It would allow attached condominiums to get VHR permits unless the applicable homeowners association rules prohibit VHRs. It would require advertising platforms to include family-friendly language for VHRs in residential areas. Appeals of permit denials would go to an independent hearing officer instead of to the planning commission. And commercial and recreational areas would be regulated with the rules applicable in the tourist core area plan, and then residential areas would be regulated more strictly. Also, room night reporting would be required. And version two also removes the one hundred and fifty foot buffer and then replaces it with a prohibition on properties with VHR permits being adjacent to each other, and also includes the cap of twelve hundred permits in residential areas. And then all other changes are the same as in version one. And in addition to the changes that council requested that I just went over, staff made some additional edits that are included in both versions. To complement the cap, the provisions were added to reestablish a waitlist so that when the cap is reached, there'll be a waitlist. The prohibition on permit transfers is clarified to match existing practice, which is that a permit can be transferred into a family trust in which an owner is a trustee for estate planning purposes without disqualifying that permit from continuing with the property. And the preferred application period provision has been deleted as that period has now closed. Also included in the staff report is a summary of the citation process that was requested to come back. So that is in the staff report. There's also a memorandum from Assistant City Attorney Dan Bardell to the Planning Commission that was to answer some of the questions that came up in one of the appeal hearings, specifically with respect to the three strikes rule, and touches on some of the, or is related to some of the recommendations that we heard from the Chair of the Planning Commission. So with that, I am available for any questions.
Great, thank you, Ms. Stroud. All right, council, I just want to, especially for this item and all items really, but let's really try to keep this to questions. We obviously have a lot of public comment that we should put into our consideration. So if there's any just clarifying questions on this item, if not, we can go ahead and open up public comment. Mr. Roberts, you good? Cool. All right, we're going to go ahead and open this item for public comment. Thank you, Ms. Stroud. And whoever would like to, Ryan, go ahead.
Hello, council. My name is Jonathan. I was just glancing around the room. Number one priority: ability for everyone who works here to live here. I've lived in South Lake Tahoe for ten years. That's my wife Haley, also a ten-year local, and our newborn son Kai, a one-month local. We've both worked in Tahoe's service and retail industry since moving here: serving your table, pouring your beer, teaching water aerobics to our elderly, fixing your bikes, and stocking your groceries, doing the work that keeps this town running. In all those years, we've never found stable housing. We've moved seven times, not because we're bad tenants or don't pay rent, but because every place we've lived has been taken from us in one way or another: sold off, turned into a vacation rental, or made unlivable by landlords who only care about money. Two and a half years ago, we finally thought we'd found home. We settled into our current house, got married, and decided to start our family. Then only one week after bringing our baby home from a month-long stay in the neonatal ICU, our landlord gave us thirty days' notice to vacate. He's turning our home into an Airbnb. We can't afford to keep moving. We need stability for our family. But we're being pushed out of Tahoe, our home, so it can be rented to weekend tourists and added to the growing pile of otherwise lifeless vacant houses. Council members Cody Bass, David Jenkins, and Keith Roberts, this is the direct result of your vote to bring Airbnbs back into residential neighborhoods. You were warned this would happen. You knew families would be displaced, and you voted for it anyway. It's easy to make that decision when you don't have to look people, the people you're hurting, in the eye. But we're here tonight, so you can. Our one-month-old son Kai isn't sleeping on our truck, not yet, but we're being forced to start over again, when what we needed most was stability. Like many of our peers, we must now leave Tahoe for good. When we move off the hill, we will take our work, our spending, and our child with us. Tahoe will lose full-time local workers, full-time consumers, and yet another local family. Some landlords who live two hundred miles away might profit, but our community, the people who actually live here and work here, the souls who bring character and life and love to our little hometown, will lose. And yeah, yeah, I get it. We live in a dog-eat-dog world, and I'm not asking for sympathy. But basic human compassion is something I expect from our leaders, not policies that trade people's homes for profit. I hope today that weighs on you the way it weighs on little baby Kai and all the other families you've displaced.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, or, Mr. Messina?
John Messina, speaking for myself. I'm tired of hearing this nonsense rhetoric about VHRs. These people, they're saying they can't afford a home to live in Tahoe, certainly can't afford four or five thousand dollars a month for a house that can rent as a VHR. They are not depriving anybody of affordable housing because they're not affordable for most people. This is a worn-out, tired argument. I'm really tired of hearing it. It's nonsense. But what we should be talking about is how many permits have been applied for today, to date? Will, using the adjacent property rule, produce more available VHRs than the twelve hundred permitted as a cap? Those numbers I'd like to know so we can address this intelligently. I watched the Planning Commission's last meeting about the VHRs and the hearings. I think they do a better job than a hearing officer, because if you ever got a ticket over there at Safeway, you know they don't pay any attention to you. The Commission made a very thorough and fair appraisal of all of the appeals. And third, one thing else that came up during that meeting was, at least on one occasion, the guy got three citations for saying minor offense and lost his permit. And I don't think that's right either. I think we need to make it like three major offenses somehow. I think his was, he listed it on the Airbnb, thought he had permission to do it, apparently didn't, you know, and he took it down, but he lost his license. So, or could lose his license, I should say. And another problem that it doesn't seem to be addressed is, if you're a VHR owner and you rent to somebody through one of these online services, and they show up with six cars, what can you do? Call the police? How do you, how do you control it without you becoming the blame on you? Do you understand what I'm saying? They can only do so much. They need some way of enforcing the rules without becoming a victim of their tenants. So something else to think about. Appreciate it.
Yes, all right, thank you.
Good evening, Dan May for the record. My comment about the VHRs is really just about the process, because I'm trying to understand what's going on here. This summer, there was months of deliberation among City Council about how to address this very pressing issue that has a lot of different opinions that led to voters' initiatives and a lot of animosity between people. And at the time, I suggested that we get more public input, but we didn't. But that's, can't go back on that right now, because it already passed. Or, excuse me, you already made a decision back in June. And I was somewhat relieved when what passed in June included a number of important compromises. But then I was, heard that we were going to bring it back up in September, and I'm like, okay, maybe we'll discuss how things have been going. But instead, what I saw was a discussion that changed half a dozen different items, including some of the largest points of compromise. How, so what was the point of those three months of, or a few months of trying to come to a decision if we're just going to wipe it away after a few months of changing our minds? Because what data do we have since June? There's not enough rentals out there to know how much they're impacting local neighborhoods. All, only data that we possibly could be making a decision off of is people that are trying to apply for permits having issues. And if that's the only data that we have, then all of the decisions are leaning towards people that want to rent houses and away from people concerned about their residential communities. So I would hope that if we're going to base it off data, then make sure we have good data about all parties involved. And if we don't yet, then wait to make a change. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your comments. Yes?
I hate to bring up old history, but when I first moved to town, you could get a shack out in Myers, out on Christmas Valley for twenty-five grand. Now, of course, you could see through the walls, but you could buy it for twenty-five thousand. And if you really wanted to take a chance, you'd go out to Fallen Leaf Lake and buy something that was less than that, because nobody wanted to live out there in the sticks, right? Because they wanted to live in the town, because you wanted to be able to get a job and work down at State Line and, you know, either turn cards or turn steaks. So with all fairness to the gentleman that came up about, he's heard these stories about, you know, people can't afford it. I, when I came to town, I was making four fifty an hour plus tips, you know, flipping burgers and steaks at a restaurant. And I was able to rent a place on Paradise and Ski Run Boulevard. And it didn't cut into my, you know, I was a single guy, but I was able to make it work. So I'm sorry, but we, to take a trip down memory lane, in the eighties, second homeowners got the tax break. And then we saw the Exodus. People were selling their houses in the eighties after that happened because they were making a killing. And the real estate agent said, "Yeah, we're going to make a killing. Great." You know, we're going to flip, you're going to, your guys are going to make a killing on this. And they did. Some of them left. I, I guess I was the dumb one, because I bought a house and kept it and kept paying the mortgage over in Sierra Track, right, for a long time. But then, then in the nineties came and the boom hit. The first dot-com. And again, prices went up double, you know? And so, with all fairness, I mean, I think the family with the kid and stuff, they've got a legitimate complaint, you know? When I first moved to town, again, yeah, fifty years ago, yeah, great, it was semi-affordable. But those shacks that are out there in Chris, they're all gone now. The places in Fallen Leaf, those are multimillion-dollar houses. I don't know what the answer is, but I've always thought that, I'll just throw it out there, that good old Tweetin' Town out there in Myers could be like a mobile home park or something, if we could clean up the MTBE somehow or another, right? There's got to be a way to get some kind of affordability back in the equation for people to stay in town like myself, that, you know, raised three kids and, you know, made it work. But it's, it's hard when the houses are, you know, starting out at seven hundred to a million dollars. I mean, that's just, you know, it's like nuts. So anyway, just my humble opinion and a brief history of what happened when I've been in town.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, whoever.
Hello. My name's Samantha Alyn, and I moved to Tahoe a little over two and a half years ago, and I live in the Keys. My husband and I have owned a place over on West Shore for fifteen years. We do Airbnb. It was a second home over there. We self-manage, and I'm very aware of how to make rentals a successful part of the community. The Keys has not had that success in the past. We've heard literal horror stories of what went down before. We have two illegal rentals down the street from us currently that have been reported multiple times to no avail, no enforcement. It's gone on all summer. In fact, one is rented, as we speak right now, to another new couple. The Keys has the potential to become an absolute mess with what's on the discussion with tonight's agenda, specifically removing those buffer zones without any data, as the gentleman said earlier, is going to be very detrimental to understanding how to make vacation rentals a success. In the Keys, literally, we have a ton of second homeowners. Many of them will show an interest in earning potential income on those homes, which, as a homeowner myself, I feel is their right. But we also have a responsibility to our communities to preserve our communities. In the Keys, that could literally be, as I count the homes that are empty around me and not permanent homeowners, that, that could literally be in one block, ten houses. Understand the impact to the community, and I ask you to please wait, keep the buffers in place. Let us have your data, and let us make sure that the fees associated for the permit pay for the proper enforcement, because that wasn't there in the past. I think we need more data before we start rearranging the rules. Thanks.
Great, thank you for your comments. Yes, go ahead and come forward.
So on item eleven, as I understand it, we have an ordinance that has a one hundred and fifty foot buffer zone on vacation home rentals. And I urge our council to keep that, but other than that, I would prefer that our council make Measure T into law versus having to go through the appeals process and just do an amendment. As there have been issues with vacation rentals, one affecting the quality of life of our neighborhoods, as well as all these outsiders coming and just obnoxious and whatnot so forth, having their parties, their bands, and there have been illegal rentals in quite a bit of neighborhoods. And it's been a complaint among a good number of locals. Also, on top of this, it is affecting the availability of workforce housing, going back to affecting the quality of life of our town and neighborhoods. So in line with item eleven, keep the one hundred and fifty foot buffer zone is the least that can be done. And also, I'd prefer, as well as I'm sure a lot of locals, bring back Measure T and just put into law as it works and keep the vacation rentals at the tourist court, at the tourist court area, have the locals. As the locals I've talked to, they did like Measure T, just now are not happy of what's happened, and would like our City Council to just bring it back into law. But if not, then keep the one hundred and fifty foot buffer zone. Also, if for some reason vacation rentals keep becoming a pain in the arse, as if they've become that, we could do a total ban and model it after the City of New York, as well as City of West Hollywood, that's down by the City of LA. And they do work, vacation rental bans work, because from what I've learned, West Hollywood, I don't know if I'm correct, I have to talk with the city officials there, but the City of West Hollywood did used to allow vacation rentals, but they became too much of a pain in the arse. They did a total ban. And also have strong enforcement on illegal vacation rentals, towards three strikes. The third strike goes, I think they call it the Attorney General there. I think the city has an Attorney General. Because, yeah, they got a different structure anyways. I know LA has a city attorney, but West Hollywood is a different city, so they're actually stricter than City of LA. But in any case, is a different city. So, they're actually stricter than City of LA. But in any case, let's at least keep the 150-foot buffer zone to start with, and that'll be it. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, sure, Mr., he was, well, however you got, yeah. Mr. Miller, you're closer again, so take you first.
Hi, Alan Miller, civil and environmental engineer, head of an extensive regulatory background with the State of California, developing regulatory programs and enforcement programs and implementing them. And I wrote comments after going to your planning commission hearing last week. To the, the basic essence of it was that I think the program is just basically half-baked and, and being poorly conceived, it's being developed as you go. And these amendments are a poorly conceived addition, adding regulation on regulation. And it reminds me like a plumber just running around patching up leaks in a broken system. And it's going to lead nowhere good for the community or for the vacation home people who want to rent. I generally concur with the prior speaker that, you know, Measure T was the way to go, and, and we need to get something closer to that. But your, your effects on homeowners of denial of a vacation rental sounds, on its face, if you're not, if you're going to prohibit adjacent properties from having it, that sounds on its face like an unconstitutional, unequal treatment under the laws. I, I don't know. The poorly defined and, and structured enforcement program lead to unequal treatment as well and lots of enforcement blowback. And most particularly, the addition of these HOs, of these independent hearing officers, that's, that's a horrible idea. There's nothing going to be independent about them. They're going to be employed by the city. I discussed this in my comments. And it's, it's a, a way for the city council to adopt these lousy policies and then escape culpability for it by assigning it to some jerk who doesn't know what they're doing and is going to end you up in legal difficulties. It ought to be covered by staff, and they ought to be well-trained, and they ought to be implementing a program consistently. Just going out and hiring people off the street, I've seen this with TRPA. I talked about that. That's at the heart of your conspiracies with the MOUs I discussed earlier. So, I want you to reconsider adopting these poorly conceived regulations and then avoid having to face the appeals and complaints your HOs will lead you into. Measure T is not fully resolved, so I suggest you just take a step back, put a moratorium on new applications, and develop a coherent and legal program. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Tim Page in Lake Tahoe, South Lake Tahoe. I had, we had an incident where there was three lots away from us, which is 150 feet away from us, when it was the vacation home rentals. I live in the Pine Wood Heights area. And I, vacation home rentals where we had put up that steel, steel carport over our pavers. And we had this thing there for 18 months. And we were complaining about this vacation home rental that was, they were outside partying within, there's a bunch of kids around our neighborhood. And the safety of the vacation home rental is a big problem because you don't know who's coming in. You don't know if they're a pedophile. You don't know. You got kids around, you know, you don't know who's renting that thing. And what happened was, we were complaining about so many cars in there and complaining to the, and putting in a call to the code enforcement. And they would come and they'd, they'd cite them for different violations. And we kept calling and reporting and reporting. And one of the things that they did was, when they found out, that somehow they found out that we were the ones that reported it. And so that what they did is they came by our house, the owner of the vacation home rental, took pictures of our carport, photographed us when we were standing out in the yard and took pictures of us. And, and then actually sent that into the police department, which resulted in this chaos with this, with this carport. And I ended up having to, in the middle of Martin Luther King, a foot of snow on it, getting a violation taken down 10 days. I got up there, shoveled the snow off, took 350 screws out of the thing, you know, took the roof off, got the roof off, and I didn't get it down in the 10-day period, and she got another fine. So, this is the problem, and it all resulted, I just wanted to put my two cents in about that vacation home rental. And that was because of them. Because it was, I knew what kind of car it was. It was a white Cadillac Escalade, which doesn't matter at this point. But I, I knew who it was that had done it. And they're out there taking photographs of my house. So, I just wanted to kind of throw that in. It's, it's really a problem, not just on one level, but in everyone. And then they stand in the backyard, had a hot tub and all that stuff. And then a friend of ours had one where he had kids and they were urinating off the deck across the street from him. Those kinds, those kinds of things. So, just wanted, you know, don't, I wouldn't go any, if you're going to do 150 feet, I mean, you should do it further than that, but don't go closer. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, well, she was, well, you guys, all right, Mr. Spiel.
Thank you. Hi, Nick Spiel. I'm disappointed to have to be up here again. I thought this was perhaps over with. And I think that it's just a sort of a symptom of the process that just doesn't work, right? This isn't a good way to figure out complex policy nuance, you know? To get community buy-in is to have us all wait here for hours, line up, say something for a few minutes, have no conversation. The city knows how to do this. I've been to a number of really well-organized public workshops on a number of issues. We've been building dozens of excellent projects around the community where we put up Bristol boards and we put up sticky notes, and staff engages with people, and we talk about the nuance of issues, and we work out with solutions, and you end up with community buy-in and unanimous consent to move forward on those projects. And so, I think what we're at right now is, the city tried to push things through when Measure T got overturned. Nobody's really happy with it. And I think Ms. Wallace was sort of saying that's a signal of success, right? If it's a compromise achieved, if, if nobody's happy with us. But I don't think we're really there right now. And so, what I would ask you to do once again is, you know, genuinely try to build consensus through public workshops, have staff work, work with people, try to find the various different nuances that work for the VHR operators, that work for the community, that preserve housing. I think it could really work. But if this is the way we're doing it, I'll give you my two cents. I think that some improvements that would really help here are a, different rules for operating a VHR less than 14 days per year. The IRS already considers rentals less than 15 days per year as minimal rental use. You don't have to pay taxes on that because it's just here on the side. It's just kind of small potatoes. I think that, you know, that would preserve some of the intent of the qualified vacation home rental program where people who live in their houses could go away on July 4th, rent it out when they're not here. We get more lodging capacity on busy times. We get, you know, of course, TOT revenue from that, the, the locals be able to get revenue from that. But then people aren't living next door to a full-time vacation home rental. So, different rules for short-term, you know, just 14 days a year or anything less than that versus a full-time VHR, I think, you know, requires different sort of regulatory rules. Secondly, I know you all considered a moratorium on operating a full-time VHR within a few years of purchasing a property. I think that's really good for displacement. You don't want people to buy a house and then kick someone out from that and then operate it as a full-time VHR the next day. And so, a policy that you did consider, and you actually all voted for at one point, which was a two-year moratorium, you know, people who've been living here for two years or owning a house at least for two years can operate VHRs. Perhaps you could do the 14-day exemption, right? You can do up to 14 days a year for the first two years or something like that. Anyway, those are my two cents. Thank you.
Yes, please come forward.
Forgot to say my name the first time. I'm Dina Ramaha. I am a social worker and business owner here in South Lake Tahoe. I'm going to try to stick to things that haven't been said already because we've had some really good points, and I'll try to bring up something new. Even Disneyland has a capacity limit. We love South Lake Tahoe. People come from all over the world. But when we are overpopulated, we are unable to enjoy it as residents. And then also, the tourists are not really having that great of a time as well. When we, oh, when we're unable to monitor the people who come through our neighborhoods, something that's really important to know as a social worker, we're unable to monitor people who could be registered pedophiles or sex offenders. My neighbor rents her house out. We had six gentlemen staying at her house next door, working on some construction project. And we were afraid to leave the windows open in my daughter's room. And whenever there's people that we don't know in our neighborhood, we can't let the kids play outside on their bikes by themselves. So, that becomes very dangerous. With sex trafficking becoming a huge issue in our community nationwide, it's really important that we set limits and boundaries around guests who come to South Lake, people who stay in hotels or lodges. The staff there are trained to look for signs of someone who's in distress. They have video cameras, and we are unable to monitor that. So, if it's a free-for-all in South Lake Tahoe, we could be inviting these people to come party in the middle of the night and bring these young, vulnerable children into neighborhoods without us being able to support them and help them. Having an exhausted amount of people in our city when we have already hotels that are already so full, now we're adding all these homes, that exhausts our police department, our fire department, our service workers, our city workers. By the time summer ends, everyone is so emotionally beat up and physically beat up. There's a saying in town that vacation or summer in Tahoe doesn't start for residents until September. Even the roads for bikes become unsafe. Short-term rentals, if we look at the motto of people before profit, instead of lining pockets of people who, I understand, want to make an extra income or have a second house and can afford this, we have to make sure that we, make sure that our locals can afford housing. That's more important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Soderstone.
I would like to just reiterate the comments of most of the people tonight, which is refreshing. I know Mr. Messina thinks that there are not single-family rentals being taken by this, but the house directly next door to me has always been a single-family rental. It is a single-story home. It is junk. It has been built in the 1960s. It has never received any upgrades, and it's now going to be a vacation rental. The house on the other side of me had a machete attack occur not too long ago. Yeah, I mean, it's vacation. It's not citizens. And I definitely, I've spoken about it before, there are reasons that we have laws, like Megan's Law and all these laws, to protect people in their communities. I don't want sex offenders. I don't want pedophiles in our neighborhood. We know where they live. I know where they live in the Keys. There's a few of them out there. And you can look those addresses up. But when we're renting to random people, those people are in our neighborhoods. And you can see the people that are renting. These are not upstanding families. They're not good people. Nobody is vetting this. And how much does it drain the resources of our community to enforce this? They are putting all the enforcement on our city and on the residents, and nothing is being held to account from these vacation rental owners or the property managers. They should be monitoring these things themselves. It should not be, we don't have to call code enforcement. I don't want to have to be a narc on my neighbors because, like the other gentleman said, that comes back to us and it reflects on us. We are retaliated against. When we call frequently law enforcement, we're known as repeat callers. They stop responding because we're just annoying people that are draining the resources. It doesn't work. It didn't work before, which is why we ended up with Measure T. I think that Tamara forced a lot of these provisions down your throats, saying that she was going to withhold her vote on other things to get these provisions passed so that her husband would be happy. We need to take a pause, go back, look at it all. Because I agree too, that if Measure T was not constitutional because it was not equal treatment for people, there is nothing in this measure that's equal treatment either. So, we really need to take a pause. Still in the courts. Probably should have just let it play out. Just please be thoughtful.
Ms. Soderstone, yes, go ahead.
Good evening, city staff and council members. Never gets less terrifying coming up here, no matter how much you do it. I want to begin by acknowledging the challenging time we've all been facing with the departure of Mayor Wallace. Leadership transitions are never easy, and I deeply appreciate the dedication and resilience that you continue to show in serving our community. Your work matters, and it doesn't go unnoticed. And Cody especially, I appreciate the respect that you bring to each topic. So, I just wanted to make that comment. In regard to the VHR ordinance, those of us working on improving this ordinance, sometimes referred to as special interest groups. I think we're a group of special people who are interested in the success of our community. So, I'm kind of reclaiming that phase because we are locals, we employ locals, we employ tradespeople in our town. The guests that come to stay here are good families. We do vet our guests that come here. Our company, we manage 160 properties in town, and that's thousands of people that are coming here every year. And they are good people that came here, just like a lot of people here, who came to visit Lake Tahoe and probably stayed at a vacation rental before Airbnb, and the OTAs blew it up. But prior to Measure T, we made a lot of great efforts and made a lot of strides and regulations. We've done the same thing with this process now that people have got that ability back to do that. And our economy needs this industry. So, I don't want to, I sympathize with what some of the other speakers have said, but we've made progress, and I feel like we need to stay on that task because this industry does create jobs. I've been here 20 years. I haven't seen other industries come to Lake Tahoe that provide the kind of jobs and the kind of resources that the vacation industry does. So, I want to keep that in mind. I was able to buy my first house after renting year after year after year because I got employed by the vacation rental industry, and I now have a steady income and was able to buy a home. So, we're hiring a family with a baby. Come talk to me. I'm happy to have a conversation with you afterwards. Anyway, I'd really encourage the council, let's build resilience, let's create jobs, let's help fund our city coffers so that we can continue to fund the essential services that we need in our town. Thank you for your time.
Yes, is that Mr., who's next? All right, go ahead and please state your name for the record.
Am I still okay?
Oh, of course.
My name is Roberta. I actually didn't prepare anything. I didn't know I was going to come up here. But I just want to thank you guys for everything that you do for our city. I know you have our best interests at heart with everything that you guys do. I'm coming up here because I moved here in 2006. I, I have been in the hospitality industry for 30 years, maybe a little more. But I moved here, working in the hospitality industry, and I've had a couple of different jobs since I've been here. I've moved, moved up. But I have worked for some bad actors in this town, and I'm the first to admit that. You know, when you're, when you have a job and it's the only way that you're going to eat dinner, you have to push things under the table to get, to keep that job. And I know that there's bad actors out there. But I feel that putting any more restrictions on the VHR community and the short-term rentals, I think that what needs to happen is we need to get rid of the bad actors. And if there's good enforcement, that's possible. The company that I work for now, you know, we are very proactive about that. And I heard some, I wanted to comment on, on the thing with pedophiles. You know, J.C. Dugard, that guy didn't have a short-term rental down the street. You know, he came here prowling. So, you don't know who's driving down your street. You don't know who your neighbors are that, that aren't registered sex offenders. You know, saying that that's going to happen with short-term rentals, I think it's a bad rap. So, I'm in favor of this going forward, and I just wanted to put- favor of this going forward, and I just wanted to put my opinion out there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who would like to go next? Yes, go ahead, Ms. S.
I'm Donna Walker. I've been in Tahoe for 40 years. I bought my house as a second home. Um, over the years, I was able to rent it occasionally. We vetted our tenants. We monitored the property. The money I earned from that went back into improving that property. I am now in my 80s. A little bit of extra income will help me keep my home. It is a matter of good management. I can tell you, I live in a neighborhood where only 30% of our homes are fully occupied. They're second homes. And it is often the homeowner of that second home that is the rudest person on the block. They're not tenants. I'm really upset by the vilifying of people who are tenants. I applaud what you're doing. I ask you to be considerate of all that you've heard and not throw out the baby with the bath. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Yes, go ahead. Sorry, Ms.
Mayor Bass and council members, I'm Lisa Underwood, and I'm speaking on behalf of Tahoe Keys Resort and the 65 homeowners we represent. To quote one of the speakers that mentioned, he didn't understand why we were going back and revisiting, uh, the procedures. He also said, there isn't enough data because there aren't enough permits available. And I just say to you, that's why we're redoing this. It's because the, the process was flawed, and we had to re, uh, redo it. I'm here to request that the council move forward with the first reading to, to remove the buffer and institute a straight cap. The current buffer zone rules have created significant confusion and growing frustration among applicants. Several owners with approved and paid applications invested their time and money preparing for inspections, some even passed inspections, only to be later to be told that their permits were denied because of buffering. We have two homes under management that passed inspections in the same week, only to be told afterwards that someone beat them to the permit. Neither owner received notification that they were permitted, they were, sorry, that they were pending applications nearby. These owners have been waiting since mid-August with absolutely no recourse. After seeing this play out, we've had to caution our own owners, even those who received notification of nearby applications, that the, the process was indeed flawed. It carries serious financial risk. So far, two of our homes that were buffered out and another six were blocked even before applying. That's 32% of our preferred group, the group that was supposed to get priority, that were never allowed to get the permit because of buffering. And, and of course, then they had to compete directly with, with new applications. Now, it's never the intent of this program, I'm sure. We all know that life isn't fair, but property owners have every right to expect that their council will, um, you know, act in their best interests. This program was court-directed to make whole those harmed by Measure T, yet buffering continues to block that outcome. The solution remains clear and simple. Eliminate buffering entirely and rely on the, on the 2,000, the 1,200 permit cap. Guarantee permits for prior permit holders who wish to continue, including those unfairly buffered out. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I apologize. I should have had bigger thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Underwood. Uh, yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm, uh, good evening. I'm Valerie Coyle Miller, um, a long-term resident of South Lake Tahoe, vacation rental owner. Um, I want to basically, uh, back up everything she just said. Um, I'm a little bit confused and frustrated in, as to why we're going round and round and round with these same, it just feels like people are coming up here and saying the same things they did a year ago. And I think we were past that. So I'm just going to say that I feel that, that the real issue right now is the buffer. And I'm one of those, um, vacation rental owners that never had any problems. I know I've been here and spoken to you before, and Scott will continue to roll his eyes at me, but, um, we don't all have bad, um, it's not all bad experiences. Um, and I feel like the buffer has been completely unfair to many, many, many people. And for us, we're just a family that owns a second home that we inherited, and it was supposed to be a retirement income. And we are less than two feet. We got buffered out for less than two feet. And so that means that, um, new people have come in and applied for vacation rental permits and are proceeding. When we were in the preferred group, got buffered out. It's just so unfair and so confusing. So I just want to go back and remind you guys that the reason the buffer got thrown into this ordinance, if you go back and read the transcript, I was here, I was here for many of the meetings before it, because, um, Mayor Wallace, um, had basically agreed that she was not going to vote for the buffer, but she decided to vote for the buffer and basically said, I'll be back. I won't, we're, we're dry in July, and I'll be floating on a raft in Greece in, um, August. You all know she said that, and, um, that she wouldn't be here to vote. So she said, I know, I know, I'm, but I'm going to vote for the buffer because I don't want to hold up all the rest of the process. So the buffer got thrown in there, from my opinion, and I know others, some in high places, that believe that buffer was also thrown in there haphazardly. And I think that that is, um, the fault that needs to be addressed. I ask you not to kick this can down the road and use the opportunity of only four of you to, um, for a political play, to stall. Um, this is supposed to be a first reading. I implore you to do the first reading and move forward. And then I just have to say enforcement, enforcement, enforcement. And if my vacation rental became a problem, take away my permit. Um, so yeah, I, I think that all of this back and forth about weather, vacation rentals, you know, sex offenders, it's all just going round and round and round. Let's get on with it.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your consideration.
Absolutely. Anybody else in the room? Mr. Moser? She's closer, so she's going first.
So hi, my name is Robin Hocky. I'm a homeowner and a property manager here in our community. So first of all, I want to say I agree with the last couple speakers. I thought we were here to talk about the buffer or the 1,200 cap. And now we're going backwards, it seems like, to talk about Measure T, which is overturned. So let's move forward. And what I'd like to talk about tonight is about the several applicants, including myself, that submitted applications as instructed, on time, within, within the priority window, um, but was denied because of the buffer rule. To address the unfairness this rule has created, it's only right that those of us who follow the directions are given a fair path forward. I'm asking the council to reconsider all applicants that were denied because of the buffer rule. This should include applicants who followed instructions and waited until the exact submission time on August 23rd, 2025 at 9:00 AM as requested. Our applications were timestamped showing full compliance with the city's process. We did everything correctly. We simply ask for our applications to be reviewed without requiring us to reapply or pay additional fees. I respectfully urge the council to support automatic, um, reconsideration for all affected applicants. This would correct an injustice and demonstrate the city's commitment to fairness, transparency, and accountability. Thank you for your time and for listening to our valid concerns. And if I have a few minutes, I do want to mention that I have had a hosted rental for two years now. I have had amazing families. I'm on property. They meet me at the front door. I check them in. I give them a tour of my house and tell them the rules. I have them sign waivers to use the hot tub, to use the bikes. It's all compliant. I have never in two years had any issues. I am a super host, five-star, and, um, considering that the, the rental across the street, long-term rental, that they're up partying till two or three in the morning, cutting firewood at three in the morning, very disruptive, had many call, police calls for all their disruptiveness. I have never experienced that. So you can't put everything in a box. It's, it's for the good, um, property managers and, um, vacation rental owners that have a heart for this and are, and we are vetting our people. Nobody that's, if you're a fi, if you're under a five-star, um, person that's trying to, you won't, you won't book my property. I only take five-star guests. So take all that into consideration. Let's move forward with what we're here for.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, Mr. Moser?
Ed Moser, South Lake Tahoe. Um, yeah, here we go again, you know, deja vu all over again. Um, first of all, this shouldn't even be, shouldn't be considering any of this at all until, uh, the Measure T appeal is, is being heard. Uh, you know, your legal department should be advising you of this, and, and this, uh, should have been nipped in the bud. But, you know, Tammy is pimped by the realtors and property management people and pushed this along with Mr. Jenkins and, and Mr. Roberts here. Uh, and that's, that's the problem. Um, number one, eliminate hosted rentals. Many are not hosted. You know, I have one, a few doors down from me. There's, for the several years here, there hasn't been a single person, uh, hosting it. It's, it's completely dark until people are showing up regularly and far more than four people. Uh, so you can enforce. Um, first of all, uh, you shouldn't do any of this until, uh, the mayor's seat is filled, Wallace's, Tammy's seat is filled. Uh, and first of all, and second of all, you shouldn't enact any law or ordinance that you can't enforce. And from day one, from 2003, you have not been able to enforce. Even with Measure T in effect, your police department, their reports that there were 197 suspected illegal, and how many were actually shut down? Not a single one in, in my neighborhood. Um, so they've never, never, never been able to, until just, just recently, uh, the last planning commission meeting. Uh, never been able to, and, and you never will be able to enforce them. Um, for the buffer, the county has a 500-foot buffer, and it seems to be working. In their recent report, uh, they said that it was working and, and working fine, and what it did was freeing up building allocations because now people weren't applying for building permits to build, you know, uh, McMansions to, to rent out. So it actually had a positive effect. Um, you know, there should be at least, if you're going to do it, which shouldn't have it, uh, you know, VHR ordinance at all, should be a, a minimum of 300 feet to be reasonably effective even. Um, the attached condominiums allowing to get the VHR permits, uh, from the beginning, it was supposed to be single homeowners, uh, single-family homes only in 2003. And for a number of years, until property management people, uh, said, hey, wow, there's a lot of places out there that are multifamily, and, and people down the street from me even converted three apartments into, uh, vacation rentals. Um, so also, the appeals, uh, appeals shouldn't go to just one person. It should stay with the planning commission or with, uh, with a panel of staff. That's absurd to have one person, uh, doing that. Um, last of all is, uh, in 2004, Mr. Jenkins, you signed this, uh, the agreement with, um, with TRPA, uh, having to do with the agreements in the MOU with TRPA concerning, uh, single-family dwellings. I'd like to know if that was ever dismantled or agreed to not, uh, uh, enforce with, with the city, because otherwise you can't do condominiums. It could be single families only. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Uh, anybody else in the room? Who would like, yes, Mr. Asbury?
Hello, City Council. Um, thanks for your time again. Eric Asbury for the record. Um, I wanted to just kind of give some, um, feedback that I haven't heard. Um, so I would think that equal enforcement, regardless if someone is a pro, uh, short-term rental or against it, equal enforcement across the board, that would eliminate all issues. You know, I think that, that you wouldn't have any complaints for the people that are against it. And then, um, the people that are responsible, they would be, you know, held accountable if they had a slip-up or whatever. Um, another thing is there's this vilification of short-term renters, whereas we've heard a couple people comment that people can have some long-term renters and/or occupants. That could be nightmare, um, people. I happen to live next to one. Um, they went ahead and, and killed, intentionally poisoned my pup earlier this year. Trauma, traumatic experience. So the, the idea is, is that this vilification of the short-term renters, I think is just, it's just, it's just out there. Um, let's see here. Um, so I, my wife and I, we live and work here full-time, um, you know, full-time residents. And I would think that myself, um, in our situation, we're the biggest liability that the city has. Whereas people that come and visit here, um, they're the biggest asset to the city. They bring in money. Well, when my wife and I, we go shopping, we do our bulk shopping, we go down the hill. We'll shop at like Trader Joe's in Carson City or Costco. When we get gas, the same thing. You know, we'll time it. Um, we don't do those, uh, tourist activities and stuff. And we, I think we just have to be reminded that this is a tourist community, and we should be not discriminating and vilifying, um, people. They, that, you know, when people work hard for a two-week vacation and they hear about this vilification of, oh, these short-term renters, these visitors to our community, that they'll go spend their money where, where they welcome that. And I know people like Scott Robbins and such, you know, um, you know, they, they'll go on national publication, hey, do not come here. He's on record, you know, we, we don't want you. Stay home. Do not come here. But, you know, I know he's an anomaly. Um, I think just with the equal enforcement, um, you know, all problems can be, can be solved. And for the people that say, um, hotels don't belong in residential neighborhoods, so what are we going to do? Um, it, businesses, whether you rent for one day, one week, one month, one year, they are a business. So what are we going to say? Just no, you can't rent your home. Um, that just goes against, you know, private property rights. And, um, so I just, hopefully that's some kind of different feedback that, you know, you're not having to hear the repeat. Again, thank you for your time, and I appreciate, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Asbury. Uh, is it going to be, well, you can only do it once by our protocols. Sorry, we have to follow the protocols. Um, and we, yes, we're, I think. If you could just state your name for us.
Laura Kosky. Okay, there's a citizen lawsuit against the VHRs. I'm totally against them. I have 12 neighbors that are outraged with it. And I had already, uh, presented a few cases. I'll go over and again. They bring their dogs. The dogs start barking. I have some elderly folks that don't want to listen to a bunch of barking dogs. I don't need cigarette buds flicked over onto my property or barbecue coals. Um, many of my neighbors had concerns of noise pollution. Even the wildlife have rights, and they leave their chocolate bars in their cars, and alarms are going off, or they can't start their vehicles, so they're knocking on your door for help. You spend five hours out there with an icebreaker, trying to help them get out of a little ice area, uh, just because our roads are not taken care of, and they haven't been paid for over 30 years. Um, I hope the citizens' lawsuit wins. Um, we can go back and forth on the laws. Uh, it's just not working. We don't have enough enforcement. We had 30 sheriffs out at my house. My neighbors are not going to tolerate this at all. And they had a few neighbors kicked out of our area. I like the buffer zone, but to take million-dollar homes and trash them, and even the liability on the homeowner, because then they have to go through lawsuits when these people trash their homes, and it's not a, a good experience at all. It's not healthy. Um, I wanted to go back to the gentleman that couldn't find housing. Um, I really think we have to put pressure on all these corporations around the lake, which I've talked to the oversight about. Uh, you can't have Zephyrco making billions of dollars and then paying $16 for managers and then having alcohol and drug problems every weekend and not regulating this. And so, um, I really think we got to put pressure on our governors. Otherwise, Joe Lombardo might just pull out of the TRPA altogether. Um, there's just too many incidences. July 4th, we had a gunfight over at, uh, Ski and Beach. And then at noon, when I was there, they were drunk. By midnight, they were, you know, vandalizing all the vehicles and the gunfight. A bunch of those kids went to jail. Some went to the hospital. So, um, you know, as well as getting on these hotels, they have to have security, and they have to get a permit before they just throw a big bash on our lake. Um, otherwise, Trump comes in like the Hard Rock and just kicks you out of here. Uh, same with Ski Run. You know, he has a lot more power than we recognize, and, uh, he's not going to tolerate all this. Um, I want to talk about the high turnover. It's basically increase in accidents and increase in lawsuits. And, uh, Heavenly has got to get it together. There's triple in lawsuits, and, uh, we have to write them letters and put pressure on them now. And we have to write them letters and put pressure on them now. BlackRock and Disneyland are shareholders of Val Resorts. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Anybody else in the room that would like to give comments? No worries. Mr. DeShara.
Good evening, Mayor Bass, members of the council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, Steve DeShara on behalf of Tahoe Chamber. Last time you discussed this matter, we supported the direction of eliminating the buffers, which have been the real issue this summer. Not the complaints about VHRs in neighborhoods, but about the buffer zone. You've heard a lot of testimony about that this evening. We also supported the cap of 1,200, which I think makes a lot of sense. We are very mindful of the business activity and the investment activity and the jobs that are created by VHRs in our tourism community. You've heard some red herrings tonight seeking to drag you off your mission of what we're here to focus on, what we're here to discuss. I hope you stay on point and on track. Again, we do not support the buffers. They don't work in the county, by the way. We've had plenty of testimony from members of ours who live out there. The difference with the county was they grandfathered everybody that had a VHR. So they didn't have a clean slate, supposedly, some people think. But we're mindful of the business ramifications of this. We're also mindful of the neighborhood ramifications of these issues. We urge you to stay on point, consistent with the direction that the council determined last time. And I wasn't a real fan of necessarily having the planning commission hear the appeals. But I think they did a really good job the last few months. And the recommendations that they brought forward to you, based on their experiences, and I watched very carefully and listened very carefully to their discussion at the last meeting, you know, they showed a real value in what they are bringing to the council. You can't maybe take all of their recommendations or suggestions into tonight. But they are worth your time and effort to look at. I thought they did a very good job. Anyway, thank you for keeping forward to the direction we need to go this evening and staying focused. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeShara. Let's see, anybody else in the room? Mr. Frye.
Dear council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Mr. Bass, Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Roberts, thank you for voting this motion forward to first reading in an effort to further improve the program. It contains many important items, including two options to address buffering. While adjacent buffering is an improvement from the 150 feet we have now, it leaves some important issues unresolved. First, the preferred group homeowners who were harmed by Measure T were promised priority treatment in this permit rollout, yet only a fraction have been able to secure a permit. Many are still blocked by buffering, no matter the capacity. Second, buffering in any form is arbitrary, unpredictable, and is undermining the very goals set by this council. In addition to blocking many of the preferred group, the current policy is preventing the city from reaching the 1,200 permits that were intended. It's causing uncertainty, wasted time, and financial risk for applicants. It has turned routine application errors and delays into high-stakes consequences. These folks are confused, frustrated, and looking for answers, and it doesn't need to be that way. Buffering of any kind also unfairly impacts large parcels due to their exposure to many adjacent parcels. But these large parcels are ideal for VHRs because they're unlikely to ever disturb their faraway neighbors. It just doesn't make sense. A simple cap of 1,200 provides transparency, fairness, and predictability, and would ease a lot of restlessness with upset preferred group members and local industries. Beyond buffering, this motion also cleans up several other key issues. Clarifying rules for commercial zones, condo eligibility, and more. Frankly, I'm stunned by the identity crisis in this community. We are a tourism-based economy with transient neighborhoods. This is not the suburbs. Tourists are not terrorists, and the fear mongering is wild. We're all tourists somewhere, practice kindness. Few things have harmed our local businesses and workforce more than Measure T. It's short-sighted to bite the hand that feeds us and complain about the ability to survive. The data is clear. VHRs are essential and irreplaceable in our economy. Most cause no problems. And effective enforcement, not buffering, is the only proven way to address bad actors. This is a pivotal moment for the city and South Tahoe's economic future. I urge council to stand with local small business, stay the course, and move this reading forward with the elimination of buffering altogether. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Frye. Is there going to be anybody else in the room that would like to give public comment on item number 11? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and move to our Zoom platform.
Thank you, Mayor. I do see that currently we have six hands raised. First up is Andrew Price.
Thank you. That's Andrew Pierce. I'm the attorney for the South Lake Tahoe Property Owners Group. And yes, I am the person who was the lead lawyer on the Measure T case. The chances of that being reversed on appeal are frankly slim or none. And I think the city attorney probably advised you that in executive session. That's why you guys didn't appeal. In any event, we appreciate that the council has allowed for the historic hosts that are in good standing to have priority. But unfortunately, many of them were denied permits because of the buffer zones. One of my clients owns a large property, several acres. He's the only one on his street. His property happens to be within 150 feet, the property line, of another house way up the hill that he didn't even know was there. And he can't rent his house out. This is the ideal kind of property. And of course, he's owned it, I think, probably for 30 years. If the city continues with overly stringent application of its policies so that a huge fraction or even the majority of our members cannot rent out their property, they will have no incentive to stop from going forward with a lawsuit against the city seeking damages. Many of them have hundreds of thousands of dollars in damages because of a violation of the Commerce Clause by the city when it adopted Measure T. We've held them back so far from suing, but I would not advise them to hold back if they can't even rent now. Also, the buffer zones and the adjacency rules do have some specific legal issues. They constitute spot zoning because specific properties are treated differently from their neighbors. Also, California Government Code, Section 65852, says, I'm going to quote this, "All such regulations shall be uniform for each class or kind of building or use of land throughout each zone." And there's a case that was brought in Mammoth Lakes against the county of Palomie nearby, where they said you cannot have a different rule for one house than another house in an agricultural or residential zone. And that's what you're going to be doing if you keep the buffer zone or an adjacency requirement in place. The El Dorado statute law also may be challenged legally. Certain people are talking about that. So I think the proposal that's been brought forward after the last meeting is very well-balanced and makes a lot of sense. Couple of other quick thoughts. I'm probably the only one here who's appeared in front of both hearing officers and the planning commission. I know the planning commission, which I saw deny somebody's appeal just before the case I was on at their last meeting, does a very good thoughtful job.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Your time is up.
All right.
Next up, we have Ms. Jackson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Local residents have talked about the affordability of housing. But just want to mention, this is a statewide issue, not just a local issue. When Measure T went into effect, hundreds of VHRs were sold, but it didn't lower the cost of housing. In fact, rentals went up 50%. I attended the September meeting where a vote occurred to rewrite the ordinance, and I support the decision to remove the buffer. I was a preferred VHR owner who applied early, paid over $5,000 in fees and required upgrades, passed inspection, and yet was given a form letter saying I was scuppered out by a few feet. I've owned since 2001. I have had a good relationship with neighbors, some even renting my home. But I've lost all the summer months. My house is vacant. I don't want to lose the winter. The 5K in fees and upgrades are on my credit card. My property taxes are due in December, December 10th. And contrary to comments made earlier, VHR owners do contribute substantially to local funds. My property taxes help pay for police and fire, public works, parks and recreation, and city administration. The annual permit fees for a three-bedroom are $1,340 annually. And this does not include the thousands I used to contribute annually in transient occupancy tax, which I no longer do as my house sits vacant, waiting your decisions. VHRs are required to have external signage, decibel meters, police and local contacts available, $1,000 fines, approved parking, occupancy limits, and they pay large permit fees and TOT taxes. These will help pay for enforcement. In closing, I believe the city can successfully allow VHRs and balance the needs of the community by removing the buffer and improving the city by allowing VHRs to once again contribute to TOT and to permit fees. I urge you to move efficiently. Time is of the essence for people like myself with vacant homes and property taxes coming due soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Raphael.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, hi, I'm Raphael Campos. And I just want to say that I support everybody's comments that has made great comments about removing the buffer. And I do understand the other side also, that they have a lot of issues. But now with the new rules and more staffing versus only three people before, maybe was quoted before, if I'm not correct. But with all that and code enforcement, I think better management will be a bigger improvement for our side of removing the buffer, please. Thank you for everybody else that made comments on that behalf. And thank you, council.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Blake Herschaft.
Hello, my name is Blake Herschaft. I'm a Tahoe City resident, homeowner, and expert in housing data analytics. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, there's Raphael. That's all good. So just wanted to give you some housing data. In 2025, there are twice as many short-term rentals in the United States as there are homeless people. Let me repeat, twice as many short-term rentals in the U.S. as there are homeless people. This is also true in California. Like a previous speaker said, this is a statewide and national issue. This is because hundreds of councils, just like this one, don't understand the game of musical chairs that is housing instability in the 2020s. We're in the worst housing crisis since the 1930s. Every restaurant I go to has at least one person who is homeless or on the edge of homelessness. This is in North Tahoe. I'm sure it's the same in South Lake. You might not have felt this personally. I'm sure there are many people in the room who have not rented a home in this century. We're a quarter century into this one. It was different then, and it's just tough now. I've rented only in this century, and it's been a tough, tough game. If that's you, try to empathize. And if you can't empathize, at least be consistent. We're patting ourselves on the back over ADU policies and ADU programs. What have we built, 30? It will take 100 years of ADU construction to make up for the 1,200 units. You plan to demolish tonight. If you plan to use something like a cap, my recommendation is you go to 3%. That's what the city of Austin, Texas, used. That would be 450 units. 1,200 is way too many. You can't build that. I also recommend you collect data for another year and take some time to consider other things. Thanks so much for your service.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have Carol Dom. Carol Dom. Okay, oh, there you go. Go ahead, you're on with council.
Oh, good evening. I'd like you to please consider that removing a buffer zone is going to cause some local residents to be sandwiched in between vacation rentals across and next to them. And I don't feel that there's enough data to support doing that. I hope that the city won't become too greedy because VHRs generate the revenue. It seems that this issue is only happening because there was not a severability clause in the last Measure T that was supported by the voters. And that's the only reason that the city is graced right now with regaining revenue from this source. It seems that a win-win situation and a good compromise for both VHRs and for the local residents is to have a buffer zone. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Angelique.
Hello, my name is Angelique Carl. I am a South Lake Tahoe resident. I'm also grateful to have received a VHR permit this year for the first time. And I may be coming from the minority here as far as the comments that I've heard so far. But I am asking you to revisit the language around year-round compliance. That's currently written in the ordinance. And my concern is that there's two different structures of enforcement between the two permits. My understanding from asking these questions to the city directly was anyone with a VHR permit for their home is, excuse me, is required to follow the restrictions on occupancy and vehicle parking year-round, no matter if the home is being rented or not. And I'm concerned about that as a primary resident. This is my home. I think you might want to reconsider for owner-occupied homes, reconsidering that requirement. The current language says occupancies shall be calculated by the number of persons present at the vacation home rental property at any given time. And to what Nick was stating before, if I'm someone who hopes to rent out my home just for a few days a year when I'm gone and the rest of the time I'm home, I'm still technically under restriction for how many humans can be in my home. And I risk being fined or cited by the city police if I go outside of that compliance number. And I think a good example to review is what you currently have for the hosted rental permit, which only is enforced during the times that the property is being rented out. The reason I was given by the city for the enforcement, the year-round enforcement for the full home rental was that it would be easier for the enforcement officers to perform their duty. And I don't think that this really aligns with the city's, the city council's goal of protecting residents and allowing us to live here easily. So please reconsider the language as far as the enforcement policy and the effect that it has on owner-occupied homes and primary residents specifically. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have Nicole Ladd.
Evening, council. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Perfect. Nicole Ladd here, owner of Summit Tahoe Vacation Rentals, longtime local. We manage about 30 homes, so we're very small. Even though I manage VHRs, I was a long-term renter once for many years. In fact, my business partner still rents long-term, so we definitely see both sides. I like to call myself the anti-VHR VHR manager. I just did a quick search on Zillow, and it looks like there's over 200 long-term rentals available right now. Most of my friends have zero issue finding long-term rentals. So I think it's not a quantity issue, it's an affordability issue. COVID and the housing market can be blamed for that, not VHRs. I would actually argue VHRs benefit locals by enabling VHR company owners like myself to pay locals much, much higher wages compared to other hospitality industries. Most of my cleaners and vendors and employees make more than me and own their own homes. It's a very lucrative industry for locals and enables locals to buy homes. To the new dad who first spoke, I bought my house when I got into this industry, making only 60K. So I know you can too. A lot of locals think that homeownership is out of their realm, but it really isn't. You just have to talk to the right people. With all this being said, I think we're all getting very tired of the VHR debate. So I strongly urge the council to continue the momentum of the last meeting and to move forward by adopting version one of the ordinance changes that removes- forward by adopting version one of the ordinance changes that removes the 150-foot buffer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up we have Mike. Mike, are you with us? Okay, moving on, we'll go to Greg Schumacher.
First of all, thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak. I want to also give a pat on the back to the city staff who worked so hard on amending this ordinance and creating the language. I say that because I have studied the ordinances that have been enacted in many other states, counties, and cities, and I would say from that experience that Lake Tahoe has created an ordinance that is well-informed and well-designed to accomplish the goal of enabling vacation rentals to exist as a positive and beneficial attribute to the community. I would also like to express support for version one over version two because preventing adjacent homeowners will prevent homeowners who were prevented from renewing under Measure T from obtaining a new VHR permit. There are properties that used to have permits under Measure, before Measure T, that are now being prevented by the adjacent buffering, and version one is the only way to be fair to those homeowners. In addition to that, it's important to recognize that the ordinance as written has strict provisions related to occupancy and many other aspects of vacation home rentals. From parking to trash to check-ins and everything else, you have all the measures you need to ensure that bad actors do not get to renew licenses or are removed. When you combine that with a cap, you have all the tools you need to prevent issues and to remove bad actors over the long term. So I encourage you to move forward with version one and to do away with version two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we are going to give Mike another chance. Mike, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm on mute. First and foremost, I am all for the removal of the 150-foot buffer, but really my question is for version two, the word adjacent and what that actually means, because it seems to me that what you're trying to prohibit is renting two rental properties next to each other so that renters don't throw big parties, but is across the street the same thing? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and we have Allison Giordano.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm just calling in to support option number one, to remove the buffer completely and place a cap of 1,200 permits. My name is Ally Giordano, for the record, and I own a short-term rental property management company, longtime local, 20 years here. We own elevated Tahoe properties, manage about 50 properties all along the south shore of the basin, and basically, the main thing that I'm a little bit concerned about is, you know, the fact that, you know, allowing two adjacent properties to have VHR permits right next to each other is actually better than having them spread apart all over different parts of town, because, for example, the Sierra Track is, you know, it's a local housing neighborhood. So I hear all of these arguments that are, you know, stating that local housing is, you know, going to be affected by this, but having adjacent properties, two properties next door to each other in the Tahoe Keys, for example, that would sit vacant otherwise. You know, we have two lakefront properties that were buffered out on Bellevue, and they're seven-bedroom multimillion-dollar mansions that we're not going to go to vacant housing, not going to go to local housing. They should get permits, and so it just doesn't really make any sense that, you know, the buffer would actually be a bad thing for local housing, because it's actually a good thing for local housing to cluster these vacation rentals and put them back into neighborhoods where they belong. So that is all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much. And Amelia Richmond.
Good evening. Thank you, council. I just want to keep this short. You know, it's a long night. I just agree with a lot of the previous commenters that we need more data, we need more community input, so this is a really difficult forum. There's clearly a lot of different sides, and this isn't a format in which we can discuss. The community and city staff has done a great job on other projects, putting together workshops. I encourage you to do the community outreach that this type of decision-making should have always involved, and do not remove restrictions without data. We need the housing, we need the data, we need the input. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. There's no additional hands raised, but I will note for the record that we received 12 additional written public comments from South Tahoe Association of Realtors, Miller, Giordano, N. and A., Frye, Ewing, Claire, Claire J., Claire C., Betancourt, Al Burke, A., and Al Burke, A. 2.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Blankenship. So we're going to bring this back to council. I generally don't do this, but I'm going to go ahead and open this up because really I was, from the four of us here, I supported that we would come back with this, and the main reason I was willing to do that was because there was this consideration of a second option. You know, really, and I think for us to go through this, if we are not at, and we are at a 2-2 vote, I feel like that, you know, from my perspective here, yes, we need to open an ordinance, but when you, in administration of a government, you don't ever put an ordinance into place and six weeks later ask your staff to bring it back to then rewrite the ordinance, what they just implemented, to change within six weeks. Now, I do agree that things, there's most likely many things that we all want to see changed in this ordinance, and what we need to do to do that is actually hold the public workshop that gives the data so that we're not here every six weeks with an hour and a half of public comment. We've actually gone through with both sides and decided these are what the things we want to bring to council to get changed, and it shouldn't be happening, as somebody pointed out, just every six weeks. I mean, I've been on the council here for seven years, and I've never, ever seen, and that's just because that's not the way that it works, and I made the point at the previous meeting when this was decided to be brought back, and it was very clear that there was three votes at that time, and that's where I really worked to compromise to say, at least let's look at an adjacent parcel size. I think that there's a lot other, you know, very other things that should be looked at here. For instance, if the parcel is two acres in size or something like that, it probably should have an exemption, right? There's things that we really can get thoughtful about, and when we come back to amend an ordinance and do a first and second reading, we need to have all of those changes. We don't just need to be shooting by the hip, and that's what this is. And because of that, I'm not, I'm not saying that I won't support these changes, that some of them are definitely good. I really believe strongly that the point around data for me, when we get through the six months that possibly gets us to 700 or 800 permitted VHRs with our current ordinance, to me, it's incredibly important to know, out of a period of time, are we at a 50% occupancy rate on 800 VHRs, or are we at a 70%, or are we at a 40%? What that tells us is that if we, if we're at 70%, okay, well, we can add 400 more and probably bring that occupancy rate to about 50%. If we're at 50% occupancy with 800 VHRs and we add 400 more, we're making the market unhealthy. You're now at a 30% occupancy rate, and those are the things that we, if we want to be intelligent and we want to do this in the right way, it would be using that kind of data to inform us of that, because really, if we don't need to add 400 more and 800 is getting us at that 50% place, we don't need to do that. That's really, it's wise for us to use real data to move forward on this issue, and I also think it's wise for us to allow this issue to be with at least the fifth person of this council. I think that's incredibly important for public trust. I think what we've just gone through as a city, it's really important when these issues have come up, that we're clearly of the former mayor, that we actually wait to bring back public trust. So I just want to put that out there, and I want both sides to know that, look, I'm not on, I'm not saying either side's, I'm talking about administration and the way that you properly do something. You know, I can speak quickly about my own industry and having to go through this for decades, and trust me, we never, ever got to see one of our ordinance brought back before two years of full data and full consideration. And if you want to talk about fair processes, you should go back and look at what. So I think we've, I think we've done this fairly again. I'm not trying to say, I think what's responsible is that we get together, maybe it's an ad hoc, maybe it's not, maybe it's just the two groups, and really vet this through and really make sure that you're getting everything you need. Then we bring it back for a first reading, and we get it done so that we're not doing this every six months, let's say. This should not be happening, and really, we spend a lot of time, as I think all of us know, for the last four months, we have put a lot of time and energy into this, and for us to just come back, because tonight we wouldn't get to a first reading, because how many other changes we would need to make to what's currently in front of us? And that's, again, we don't even know all of those changes. So that's going to be my point. I will open it up to other council members, but if we were at that place, it'd be nice to not, you know, spend a huge amount of time if we're going to end up at a 2-2, but everybody absolutely has the right to talk, and so I will open it up. Nobody pressed a button yet. Did you? Why does it not show up on my thing?
It's pressed.
I think you're on the wrong item or something.
... Vacation home rental. It's 150-foot buffer.
Doesn't show on mine. It's weird.
That's a clerk thing.
Yeah, it's just not showing.
Go ahead.
All of this concern for the VHR management agencies and the property owners and the landlords and whether or not they'll make enough money and whether or not they'll bring in enough tourists, and not a damn bit of concern for the families that are being evicted, for a mother, a father, and a, two longtime locals and one brand-new local who are being evicted from their homes. They're not the only ones. There are many others like them that can't be here tonight. They had to come down because they have their baby. And with only two exceptions, not a single one of the pro-VHR people here had a damn thing to say about the family that was getting evicted, right? The only people who had to say was the caller, who said, well, there's 200 units on Zillow, so it's not really a problem, and John Messina, who said, I'm sick of hearing about it, because they can't afford their rent, because the places that are being a VHR are places that they'd never afford anyway, except they're already living in their home that's, from which they're being evicted. They're paying their rent, and they're being evicted. To turn that home into a VHR, that's not a multimillion-dollar lakefront, you know, seven-bedroom house. It's a, it's a small three-bedroom ranch house on the middle of a nowhere street in our town, and that, they're being evicted because they think their landlord thinks they can make a few percent more by having it be a VHR than rented to locals. Who's wins in that transaction? I want to know what you guys think. Right, you look them in the eye. I want to know who you think is winning as a result of your votes on this issue, right? Is the community winning? Is the town winning because we're going to have tourists in that house a few days out of the year, but you're going to lose two permanent, full-time employees, people who work in restaurant management? Restaurant management, you know, our industry that we have for tourists, right? A new baby that's not going to go to LT, to Lake Tahoe School District, right? That's a child that won't enroll in school here, for which our school will lose out on funding, because funding is driven by enrollment, and this is why we're losing enrollment. Tahoe has lost 25% of its families, 30% of its children in the last 20 years, and it's because of crap like this. It's because we keep saying that what matters and what matters most is we have to make sure that the VHR industry is well, is well-supported, or we have to make room in our communities for tourists, or second homeowners matter more than locals. Who do you think wins when we lose two full-time employees and a child from our community? Is our, is our community stronger because of that? Is our, is our workforce better because we've lost two experienced, full-time employees? When they move off the hill, they are not going to commute up here. They move to Reno, they're going to get the same kind of jobs they have now, they're going to get them in Reno. They make them up here to ski, in which case the money goes to Vail, and that's in the county, by the way, not the city. We don't get their tax revenue, which is an item for later on this agenda, if we manage to get to it this late, this late at the hour, I admit, you know, right? But we're not, we're not winning with this, and the three of you voted for their eviction. It's not a hypothetical, it's not a, oh, well, this might happen, but I don't have to consider who these people really are. These are real people, and the votes taken here have directly led to this consequence that you saw and that you saw in the eye.
Hold on. Hey, 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 please, we are 100%. We are, Mr. Robbins has had his time, and I believe Mr. Jenkins is next. Do you want to go next? I can't see who's...
Yeah, I know. Well, it's a sabotage of our system by some unknown hands. First, and I apologize, Mr. Robbins, you have every right to express, and your passion is, passion is, is, is good. I don't see the issue exactly the same way, and I'm going to show you, I want to discuss a few things. One, in the Tahoe Keys, we have a, the Tahoe Keys Property Owners Association can devise whatever rules they want as it relates to homes in the Tahoe Keys. So if people in the Keys want to have greater restrictions in the city, they can impose it. But rather than do that, and these people, many of them are my friends, they, they want us to do their job. They can do it themselves if they wish to. Secondly, you talk about affordable housing, and that goes back to an important, interesting issue. We have done more, as this council and the previous one, has done more for affordable housing than any other agency in this basin, with Sugar Pine and the hundreds of units that are being built. But a question that I asked many meetings ago is, built for whom? And then I was told at a council meeting that, well, we didn't have the right contract, and they might have backed out. If we're putting money into affordable housing, I can hear somebody voice to me, if we're putting money into affordable housing, then it should be for locals first, and I'd like to know, that's why I wanted to get the people who are screening these people for Sugar Pine, rather than this rigamarole that we go through to get information, I'd like to have them up here where we can ask questions specifically is, are you, what about this family who, who, who has, is being evicted? What about the person that works at Ernie's or the person that works at other businesses? Or have they applied and how have they been treated? I want to see the real person who's making those decisions, and then I want to know from the council is, why haven't we told the people that we're putting money in, into these housing projects, that it's for our folks first? We're doing our part. The problem is that the rest of the agencies in this basin are not doing our part, their part, that they're expecting us to do their part. The third thing is, whether, whether we like it or not, and I think actually we, I think Mr. Scott, Scott Robbins and I agree on that part, is that Measure T was declared illegal because it was discriminatory. In my opinion, it should have never been appealed. The reason is because it should have been evaluated by expert counsel to determine legality on those, on these issues. Now, that's not a staff matter, that's not the fault of the staff. They did what their council at the time directed them to do. No, let me just, I have a few more things.
It's only a small protocol thing, because we're reaching 10 o'clock, and by our stuff, we just have to say that we're willing to go further, so if you don't mind, you'll be coming right back up next, but the city attorney is asking me to do this, so we need to buy our city protocols to go past 10:00 PM, have a vote from the council to do that. We have two more items left on the agenda tonight, which is number 12 and 13. Well, yeah, but we just have to make this vote before 10:00. 13, I'll look to Mr. City Manager, but I think 13 could go to November 4th without a problem, heavenly, and then it's up to council if we want to look at 12, or do we want to just get through this and then move both of these to the 4th? That's really up to us, so I'll look to you guys to look at that.
If we move either one or both. Honestly, I think both are fine, but if you have, if anyone's jonesing for doing one of the two, pick one, but I would suggest moving off both of them to the next meeting. They're not, they're not time-sensitive in that, in this way.
Well, there is one that is time-sensitive, but that's okay. No, it's not actually, you're right. I think you're right.
November 4th.
Yes.
It's okay. Okay, Mr. Robbins, are you okay with that?
Okay, Mr. Roberts, are you okay with that?
Item 12 was, was not supposed to be to decide whether to oppose or not. It was just supposed to, as you and I discussed, just to bring a discussion. And since the vote would be on the November 4th, I think we should have that discussion. And just move 13 forward.
So move, okay, so...
Move the Vail one to later, to a later, to the next meeting, or to a later meeting to be determined by staff, I would suggest.
Well, well, maybe, maybe we should decide when we want to do it and then direct the staff that that's the meeting that we want to have the discussion. We don't need to be permission, we don't need permission to be leaders.
So, so basically, I'm okay with hearing number 12. At the same point, it is late and we still have a little while on this one, so...
Hey, but I'm actually awake.
So, I'm okay with taking 12.
If that's really, if Mr. Roberts had brought the item and if you'd rather hear it, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I think so. It's a mute point on November 4th.
We'll push 13 off to...
We'll push 13 to November 4th, because that's still before...
Did we actually vote to go past 10?
Oh, excuse me, can you make the, somebody make the motion?
I moved that we proceed past 10:00 P. M.
We have public comment on...
Moving past 10:00 P. M.?
I don't believe...
City's attorney, what is the requirement for, for that?
No, we, you don't need to have public comment.
It's not an agendized item.
It's not an agendized item.
We just have to vote to move past 10:00.
Is there any council member opposed to going past 10 o'clock? Then I will reflect you all saying yes.
Thank you.
Great. And Mr. Jenkins, go ahead. Sorry about that.
Let's turn on the mic. The first thing, again, Tahoe Keys, if they want to regulate to a greater degree, they can do that. They have a board. They, they can regulate if they chose to do that. The other question that is, I brought up was the issue of affordable housing. And I say, this city council and the previous city councils and our staff have done tremendous jobs. In fact, it's gotten state awards for the amount of affordable housing that have been provided. What I don't know, what I'm not comfortable with, and what I've been asking questions about, is I know what they've been telling us, but I want those people who are making those decisions up before us, so we can get more specific with them, because they don't answer letters, they don't answer phone calls, and I have made those and I've, and I've documented those. So, again, I, I have, contrary to what you said, sir, I do sympathize with people who have housing needs. That's why I, that's why I thought we were encouraging and supporting the development of affordable housing for our people first. And our people are the people who, who live here first, the, the working people. The other thing is, what, again, this issue is, we don't know the, people have asked, how are we doing? I believe we have that data about how we were doing under this system that exists. We just haven't, I guess it's not available or hasn't been presented. Third thing is, when we talk about vacation, some of, our economy is a tourist-based economy. And making decisions in an economic vacuum, to me, is poor decision-making. I know that, I know specifically of people, I'm not going to mention their names, but I could do private, private sidebar, I don't think they'd mind, who say, gee, if we, if we had more work, we could, we could make our living. And they're making their living by the vacation rental process. They're, they're, because they're working in the vacation rentals, they're making repairs to them and so on. So, if we're, so we have to evaluate what that economic benefit is, is also. And the, the other thing is that it would be nice to know, before, before, is if there's a real threat or concern of litigation, unlike the last time that this, I wasn't on the council, I'd like to know, I'd like to have someone discuss that with us and say, you know, is, is this really a real thing? Have there been conversations between legal counsel for those people in our legal counsel? And if so, what's been the discussion? I'd like to know that, because I think we're entitled to that information. Not, not after the lawsuit, but before it. Finally, let's see, let's see. So, so, so in conclusion for me, the problem, as I understand it, from an administrative standpoint, is we had ordinances in place in the past that were not enforced, whether by design or by negligence, they weren't enforced. Because I was told, they were directed not to be enforced. That's what I've been told by several people now. I don't blame our staff for that. They were doing what they were told to do. Now, though, they've been told to enforce. They've been given resources to enforce. And so for that reason, I, with strong enforcement, I'd like to see the buffer removed and see how it works and review this again in a year when we have full data on how it actually works. And people who mess up, whether they're property owners or whether they're tenants, if they're property owners, we pull them. We pull their permits and, and, and they will, they will never see them again as long as they're property owners. So that's where I'm coming from on version one. And I thank you for your indulgence and I, I, I... Excitement, I, I appreciate, I actually do appreciate the council member Robbins' passion on these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Roberts?
Yes, thank you. I want to go back to the first speaker that spoke on this from the public, Jonathan. If, if, unless my math is wrong, he said he was evicted seven times in the last 10 years. That means several times during the Measure T being in place, he was evicted. So I'm not really sure what his challenges are in finding housing, but it's, it's definitely not only V H Rs, if even V H Rs at all. That being said, a lot of the people that are against these, removing the buffer are speaking for their own personal gains. We have a responsibility to the entire community, not just individuals. And I, I think public comment would be, would be great to have more of it, but I, it just seems like we're going to get a lot more people that just coming in to speak about their own positions. And we need to, we need to worry about the economy, the, the jobs that are created. Jonathan and his wife, we won't need any restaurant managers if we don't have restaurants. And we have plenty of them that are still on the verge of closing. The six that I manage are, are, they're not on the verge of closing, but they're, times are down right now. Times are not good for our economy and town. The challenges that were brought forward, two unpermitted units in the Tahoe Keys, I hope our city manager and our police chief are outraged by that. I hope they're looking into it. I hope they're finding out if it's true and finding out what went wrong, what, what was missed. And if there is a staffing issue, if we haven't got up to the staff yet, then they need to bring it forward to us so that we can allocate more funds, proper amount of funds, to make it happen. We have a lot of new ordinances from before Measure T that were not in place. And we have the opportunity with all that to do a much better job of getting rid of the bad actors and keeping the bad actors out. And, and I think there's a lot of, a lot of sense in, in those ordinance items. And if we think back to when we first made all these changes, the 1,200 cap was why we put a 150 buffer in. We were led at the time, we were misled at the time, that we, that we 150 would create, get us to like 1,180, I think it was. And we were all in agreement with that. Now, all of a sudden, we don't agree to that. We all, we all agreed that 1,200 was fine. Now, for some reason, it's outrageous. Again, like Mr. Jenkins says, HOAs can enforce their own buffers as they wish, or I would have, I would assume they could even outright ban them if they wished in their areas. That's why I, I think we should continue going forward and eliminate the buffer and, and go to the, accept the first reading of version one.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. I'm going to go to Mr. Irvin real quick, because he had requested to speak.
Yeah, Mayor Bass, I have a couple items that have been mentioned during public comment and through the council discussion. I just want to give the facts to the council as they deliberate. So as of 3:00 P. M. this afternoon, 404 V H R permits have been issued. 18 citations have been issued since June 23rd. I can assure you, if the chief's department gets a call, we're responding. So if the, the Keys incident that Councilmember Roberts just mentioned, we will look into that. But sometimes we don't get calls, as you know. But if we do, we're responding. And the upstaffing that we put in place to make sure we have appropriate enforcement put us at 10 total C S O staff, two of those being C S O supervisors. We have two supervisors and we have six C S Os, two vacancies that are beginning background checks currently. So I'd say that process in the four months has gone pretty quick.
Clarifying question.
Yes.
The 404 that we have now, when was the first one issued? So over how many weeks has it been since the first V H R permit was issued? Because we want to say, we, we are so far behind the number. I want to know over how much time has it been since we hit 404?
Yeah, I mean, we started accepting the applications June 23rd, and I think it took a couple weeks to get the first one issued, so mid-July.
So let's, so let's call it, for the sake of argument, without getting into too much, let's call it three months. Is that, I think that's fair, right? Maybe it's three months plus or minus a week, but let's call it three months. Sorry, I'm next to speak, though.
Yeah, no.
So, I'm not a turn, right? So in three months, we've hit one-third of the desired number. And let me just be clear, when you said that was a number we all agreed to, oh, no, that was a number you three agreed to. I agreed to zero. But let's, but, but let's set that aside. That was the number that was agreed to, but just not by me. Fair enough, right? So when you say we've been misled because we haven't gotten as many V H Rs, we are one-third to the way of what was intended in less than three months. And I will remind you that the reason we had the buffer, one of the principal reasons, was to slow down the rate at which we received applications and to slow down the rate of approval so that they weren't all showing up on the city's desk at the same day. If we had a cap of 1,200 and no buffer, they would have all shown up on day one, and they would have all had to been inspected and renewed on day one, and it would not have been phased in. It would have been a nightmare for our staff. We got testimony about that at length, and that was one of the advantages of the buffer system, was to spread out the applications so that they came in a little more slowly. So the fact that we've not hit 1,200 is not a bug that was the intended feature. And we're not so far behind that we were misled. We're a third of the way there, which is frankly faster than I think was intended. We're a third of the way there in only three months. And by the way, for those that are so worried that we're so short on Airbnb numbers and so short applications, don't worry. In 30 days, Jonathan, Haley, and Baby Kai will get evicted and you'll have another V H R. All right? You'll, that number will go up by at least one. And to the comment of, I can't remember who it was in the audience that, that said, well, look, if they're having trouble finding a job, they can come work for me or come talk to me. They're employed. These people are not poor. They are not low-income. They are not, they wouldn't qualify for Sugar Pine's village otherwise, because they earn a decent living. They are not low-income, right? So they, they earn too much as a family unit by leaps and bounds to qualify for federal HUD requirements that built Sugar Pines and half the other affordable units in our community.
They've done nothing to try to get the rules...
That's a federal rule! We don't get to change federal law!
Please, please, if you're going to...
Right? So, 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 the problem isn't that they can't afford their house, which is expensive. Home, homeownership is a fortune, home renting is still a fortune here. The problem is, they got two incomes. They both work, they're in management. They earn what for Tahoe is a good living. The problem isn't paying the rent. The problem isn't even affordability, although their home's hardly affordable. The problem is they're being evicted because their landlord wants them out to make room for an Airbnb. And that's what we voted here, that's what you three have voted here over and over again to prioritize.
Okay, so where we're at now, I'd like to see if we're going to be at a, at a two-two level here. Again, I made my comments earlier, so I think we should look at it from, from those levels, because if, if that's where we're at, again, my recommendation for the folks in the V H R industry, as well as the folks that want to protect their neighborhoods, is you've got to come together in workshops to actually do this process the right way, like things are done. And then you can get more of what you need, because we don't need to be back here in six months trying to fix what we didn't fix tonight. That's not how you effectively administer a good government. It really is not. So with that, I will see, does somebody want to take a chance at a motion?
I will make a motion that we choose no option and to not hold a first reading of either version one or version two of the ordinance as presented.
I'll second.
Well, I have, I have a question on the motion. The question is, I think the reason that the number of units, or I understand, and I just want to clarify, we were told by staff that there was only a certain amount of units they could, they could, they could issue each month. And we, and we agreed with that approach. I'm not blaming them. That's the capacity they had. So it was not because of a lack of interest in units, it was because we were starting up a new program, if I'm correct, and there was only so many units that we could permit. It's not, but we had many more applications. It's just that the processing, which you, you did very diligently in staff, this is not a commentary negative about staff, but that's why we have, and it was about 100 and, was it 100 or 180? Or 100?
The, the city council stated that we would strive to permit up to 150 per month.
And you're so at 100, so it's July, 150, 300, 450. So it's roughly...
Right on where we were.
That was it. Thank you. We have a motion, or Mr. Roberts, yes, go right ahead.
Well, I mean, I just wanted to make a comment. I mean, I know I made the comment earlier about not caring about the one, one in the individuals. That isn't what I meant. That isn't exactly what I said either. But if we went that route where every single person that had an issue, and we made ordinance changes to every single individual out there, that would take us down that road that we're exactly trying to avoid. So that was my comment. It's not, there's always opportunities to help every single person, including Jonathan and his wife. There's got to be ways we can help, and that's what we should be pursuing also. I wasn't, I wasn't by any way trying to be a big, mean guy. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts, for the clarification. And so I think we have a motion in a second, and we can go ahead and vote.
The yes is to suspend. Great.
Okay. That's what you're motioning?
Yes, yes. I want to make sure that that's what's reflected.
It's a two-two split.
Okay, so that motion will fail. Would anybody else like to put up a motion?
There was a second option, I believe, in the staff report that talked about, rather than eliminating the buffer, it had to do with property. There was a second version, and is there any support?
It was the adjacent. That was...
The adjacent.
And, and again, that was what I said, was the only reason that I voted on this last was because it was clear that we were fully eliminating the buffer, that for the record, I really fought for in the beginning, because I felt, and still do feel, when you're starting with a clean slate, it's an important thing to use as a tool to make sure that we don't end up with them clustered around one individual's home that is a permanent resident. It's, it's a very critical thing, and when you're at a clean slate, it's the only time you get that opportunity. And I'll go back to, let's let this ordinance that we wrote play out. Let's see if it gives us 800 V H Rs, and let's see what the occupancy rate is when we're at that 800. Make informed decisions based off of data, none of which we have now. So that's my point to this. But if you'd like to put an option up with one of the options, or, I mean, excuse me, a motion up with one of those two options?
Well, there were, there were two options. So option one obviously failed.
We haven't, that motion hasn't come forward.
Oh, all right.
His, his motion was just to not hold a first reading of either. So we have not had a motion with either option put forward yet.
Logic would tell us that if, that if that failed, that, so I guess there is, there My, my only point is, rather than, than belabor everything, is if, if the version one is not acceptable to a majority or to all the council, there was a second option that the city manager and city attorney brought forward. And would, would, is there any interest in entertaining that motion, approving that approach? That's really my question.
I mean, I, I would say, put it forward, we'll vote on it, if you want to make my comments, so that, because I think that's the best way to go about it, because if we don't vote on it, then I think it just...
I accept what you did here. So, so I, I make a motion that version two in the staff report, I'm not going to read, read the thing, it's in the staff report, it's written down, that version two be, proceed to, to a first reading of the ordinance. Be approved for first reading. And please, I'm not going to read it, it's in the staff report, version two as written.
I second that.
We have a motion in a second. I will reiterate just one last time before this vote for, for the public. Again, these type of changes, not to say that I won't vote for them in the future, but I want it to go through a real process of real public workshops. Come together, bring us more changes, there's a lot more that need to be done than are presented to us tonight, and that'll benefit everybody. So that's my point, we can go ahead and vote.
That motion fails.
So we are basically at a point where we could potentially try to put this third motion up, or this item is then going to move. Again, as I said also in the beginning of this, I think this is appropriate, that if there is the will, when we have a fifth person appointed, which potentially could happen by November 18th, at that point, we have a full council, and we don't end up in these 2-2 situations, but.
I think that's a reasonable, Mr. Mayor.
You know, for both sides to know that's not far out. In my mind, it's what's the best possible thing for public trust. I know that that's not everybody's greatest results and not what everybody possibly wanted, but it's where we're at, and, yes, we, I, I very much appreciate all of you. But my, again, advice, come together, do it like ordinances are amended. You've got to have workshops, you've got to go through, hear from both sides. Bring us something that we're not having to hear two hours of public comment every few weeks. So with that. Well, good. Yeah, so we basically, I think, will be moving on. We talked about, we, we basically, hearing, going ahead and hearing item 12, item 13 for Heavenly, we will move to the November 4th meeting. Is anybody, and I, I could use like a literally three-minute quick bio break, if that would be all right, because this could go on a little while, is that okay?
Mayor Bass, can I ask for some clarification really quick on the VHR? So there's comments about these workshops. From my perspective, what I just heard the council say is, after two failed votes, is that you, this VHR ordinance will not come back until there's a fifth member on the council. And, and there's no direction for us to go conduct outreach?
Not at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Could I, could.
Just a quick break, if everybody, I know we're late, but I just, yeah.
Can I just make a quick statement? You know, time?
Me too.
We.
I think number 12 can be dismissed very easily. It was dismissed at the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, you've, hold on. Just give us like literally three minutes, and you'll be up for public comment, if you don't mind. Sorry about that, I know it's late. Thank you. You're going to go ahead, Ms. Blankenship, are we okay? Okay, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order. We are moving on to the final item of the night. This is going to be item number 12, the City Council Resolution in Opposition to California Proposition 50, Use of Legislative Congressional Redistricting Map Amendment. And this is going to be our city manager, Mr. Irvin.
Thank you, Mayor Bass. So by way of background, on September 9th, 2025, Councilmember Roberts requested that a discussion item on the council opposition to California Proposition 50, Use of Legislative Congressional Redistricting Map Amendment, be placed on future agenda. And the request was then seconded by then-Mayor Wallace. Just District 3, our congressional district, currently is where South Lake Tahoe falls within, and it encompasses Plumas, Yuba, Sierra, Nevada, Placer, Alpine, Mono, Inyo Counties, and portion of Nevada County, Eldorado County. In the proposed redistricting map, the city would remain in District 3. However, District 3 would significantly be modified to include Nevada counties and portions of Placer, Eldorado, and Sacramento Counties. With that brief overview, I'll turn it over to council for any questions you may have of me.
Great, thank you, Mr. Irvin. So this will just be for clarifying questions from anybody here on council?
Just a question. Mr. Irvin, am I correct that a majority of sheriffs in, 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 in the state, and a majority of the district attorneys, including our own, oppose the measure? Is that correct? I, I, I actually think we, we have the data, but, but I. Just to ask the question, I, I believe that is the case.
I have not seen that information, sir, but.
I'm just curious what relevance a sheriff's opinion on congressional redistricting is to our deliberations in any way whatsoever.
Okay, so any other, Mr. Roberts, any questions?
No questions.
Great. All right, so with that, we're going to go ahead and move to public comment on this item. So yes, Ms. Chandler.
Good morning, I took part in the Board of Supervisors meeting, and at that meeting, they just had a similar resolution which they removed from the agenda because they felt that it was not appropriate. It's not appropriate because this is something that is going to be on the ballot on November 4th, and let the voters decide whether or not they want to make this change. A few comments. This resolution has absolutely nothing to do with the values and the mission of the city of South Lake Tahoe. If you read about the values and the missions of the city of Lake Tahoe, it deals with environmental sustainability, economic viability, quality of life, cost effectiveness, values of natural and built environments, and this resolution has absolutely nothing to do with any of those things, and therefore, it's not in the sandbox of the city council to even be considering this resolution. The resolution does state that it undermines the voter-approved framework for redistricting in California. That is not true. The voters are going to decide whether or not they want our district to be, the lines redrawn. This is definitely a political move. You can go back to September of 2021, when there was a gubernatorial recall. At that time, the city council chose not to make any kind of commitment as to their feeling on that resolution, and decided that because of its political nature, that they would not continue with it. So for those reasons, I think the easiest thing, and to save time tonight, because it's past my bedtime, would be for Mr. Roberts to withdraw this resolution and say that this is something that the voters are going to decide on November 4th, and let's let it be. Thank you. Yeah.
And yes, Ms. Soderst, excuse me. Didn't wait.
No, I wanted to really reiterate exactly what she said, that there is a lot of divisiveness going on right now. This is a very divisive partisan issue, and I just think it is inappropriate for the city to take a stance on it on any level. I will say that our last two elected representatives have been awful and do not host town halls here. So I am obviously on a certain side of this issue, but I just really think we should not be taking a stance as a city on this issue.
Thank you, Ms. Soderst. Who else, sure, yes.
May for the record, I don't need to add much more. Ms. Chandler said it all pretty well, but the, the one thing that I do want to make clear, because I read the opinion piece by Councilmember Jenkins regarding defending why this is appropriate, because it directly affects our, the people of South Lake Tahoe, that is true of many things that happen at the county level, state level, and federal level. Yet, we do not have discussions about that, because this is a city council. So why this one? It doesn't, there, there is no excuse, because otherwise, we would have talked about it one before. There have been many significant things to talk about. There have been many significant things to talk about, but we don't. I did not ask a question for you to respond right now, I'm making my comment. Thank you for your time.
You're going to have a response, but it'll be in a minute.
Yes, sir.
Again, Larry Pedego, South Lake Tahoe resident and voter. I'm confused, just earlier in the, in the night, there was some type of a motion here where you guys decided to put off naming a mayor pro tem, was it? Or a mayor, one of the two? It was kind of a juggling act there, I think I may have missed something. I apologize for that. But I, I, I understand that you put that off so that, so that it could be voted on? Was that the thing, to vote on the mayor pro tem? Or if you couldn't come to resolution, you were going to ultimately put it to the voters in June, correct? I mean, if you can't come to resolution amongst yourselves about appointing somebody to the, to the, to the seat, then it's going to be put to the voters, right? Yet, here we are talking about something that's at the state level, not here in, in my territory, where I live, over here near the Y. But we're talking about the state, and now you want to, it, it seems to be, there's a disconnect. I don't get it. I, I understand why you guys need to have a mayor and all that, and a vote, and put it to the voters potentially in June. But why is it that you don't want the voters to just vote on it? What, what do we have to get involved at the city level? That's my point. I, I don't think we need to do that, okay? So I don't know who dreamed this up, but it just seems to be counterproductive when you say, just an hour or two ago, or three, that it's going to go to the voters. Great. And now it's like, oh, well, we got to have a resolution that says, you know, yes or no on something, at, at the state level. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you for your comments. Yes. I'm sorry, I got to get.
Thank you, guys, for being so patient with everyone. I would like to also have it removed from the agenda. If we are going to talk about something that is not on the city level, then we're opening up Pandora's Box. We can start putting things on there about genocide in Palestine. We can talk about Donald Trump giving $20 billion to Argentina instead of giving it to our own citizens here in the United States for our schools and our citizens. If you could please remove it, that would be great, thank you so much.
Yes, Ms., go right ahead.
Juan, I do agree with, with what Ms. Chandler said, as well as a previous speaker to me, that this will open Pandora's Box, as I have a lot to say of not liking Trump and what an idiot he is, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I would urge that the council just remove this and just stick to the local matters as proposition, as proposition, Proposition 50 is, is already out there for the voters to vote on and decide on what direction the state wants to go on doing the district boundaries. And let me see what else I have here. So it asks that Councilmember Roberts just pull this off and just stick to local matters. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Gregrich.
David Gregrich, South Lake Tahoe. First, I want to echo the several fine and valid points made by Ms. Ramirez-Thomas and Ms. Allen in their letters. Ditto. To paraphrase an old political slogan, "The business of the city council is the city's business." Proposition 50, whether it passes or fails, has no direct impact on the needs or functions of the government entity that is the city of South Lake Tahoe. I would challenge you to tell me what Prop 50 will do for any of these strategic plan priorities. There's no shortage of partisan political outrage in this world. If the city council is going to adjudicate them, we will never have the time or energy needed to address the real legitimate city matters and issues. The council has functioned as a nonpartisan body. Proposition 50, whichever side you're on, is as partisan as it gets. Please reject, reject the inclination to consider these types of matters. Table this and proceed with the real business of the city. And to emphasize the point, it was 10:27 when we got to this matter. There are five items or topics remaining on the agenda. We're past the 10 o'clock deadline for completing business. We failed to complete business at the last 5:30 meeting, and if memory serves, that is not the only time this year that you failed to complete the agenda in a timely manner. This does not serve the public well. You know, I'm a night owl, I stay, you know, for the majority of the majority of the meetings, but this does not serve the public well, and that's something you need to consider in December when you renew the city council protocols. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregrich. Mr. Moser.
Ed Moser, South Lake Tahoe. I aspire to Mr. Gregrich's eloquence. Yeah, you know, this is the, the copy of Mr. Jenkins' letter.
Thank you for reading it.
And, you know, you state in it, the second sentence, or down by after the resolution, "It direct, quote, 'it directly affects the city's existing congressional district.'" I agree with that. You know, the second congressional district here, you know, over the years, you know, we had Mr. McClintock, and we had a, a number of very, what I felt were very overly qualified people running against him. But just, you know, sheer, sheer. people running against him, but just, you know, sheer, sheer numbers, Republican, of the way the district was laid out and drawn, didn't have a chance of winning. You know, a couple of them came close. So, you know, in regards to that, you know, I don't have a problem with changing it if we're going to get somebody competent in there. But on the other hand, you make that point, but yet, you know, Trump and Musk cut forest service jobs that directly affect the basin here, you know, firefighting abilities here. SNAP, people that are on food stamps are SNAP, you know, cutting back and may not get any at all in a week or so. Healthcare, you know, cutbacks, you know, refusing to resolve the healthcare issues, which is very important here, the number of people on it, on Medicare and Medicaid and Medi-Cal. So, you know, if you want to take up those issues and consider all that, that I think have a greater effect, immediate effect on people here, and affecting us, affecting our health, our safety, and our welfare here, more than, more than this, then go for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moser. Anybody else in the room? Mr., yes, come forward and state your name for the record.
Hi, Dan Dubuque, 20-year resident, South Lake Tahoe. I want to thank you all, first of all, for your time and effort and the hours the council and staff has put in to be here this late. It is commendable. I agree with the other speakers. This issue has no business being in front of the town council. It's not a local issue. We have way more problems, and this resolution is a referendum against the current administration. Does this council want to stand up and say, "We support the administration that currently is running this country into the ground"? I don't think so, and the voters will remember this next time around. If you were at that No Kings protest, not at all any support for a no on 50. Look at the signs around town. Yes on 50 predominant. You're going to alienate voters if you put this to a vote. Withdraw the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, Mr. Messina.
I've been busy today. John Messina, speaking for myself. It really bothers me that so many people are here tonight to put their political agenda above the welfare of our city. Either they don't know, or they don't care, that the state funds many of our projects. In fact, they clear Highway 50 for us and provide funding for snow removal in our residential areas as well. Without the state funding, we would be snowed in all winter. That's just one of the many things the state does for us. They help us with the conservation projects, the restoration projects, dozens of other things. So, what happens at the state level does affect this city and every individual in it, and we shouldn't be ignoring it because somebody has a political agenda. Yeah. Gerrymandering was wrong in the 60s, when the Democrats did it, and that's why we set up this impartial commission to do the districting here. And now, because it's not going the way King Newscom wants it to go, he's going to throw that out and try and do his own thing. It's wrong when he does it, it's wrong when Trump does it, it's wrong when anybody does it, and we should oppose it at every level, including the city, state, and federal. Thank you.
Mr. Messina? Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Friedrich.
Good evening, Mayor Bass, council and staffs. Good to see you all. I would say, just as a former city council member, I believe deeply in representative democracy. We did a participatory democracy exercise that went beyond that, gave voters a direct say in how we spend their money. I voted yes on Proposition 11 in 2008 to form the California Citizens Redistricting Committee Commission. But right now, our democracy is in crisis, which is what drew more than 2,000 people out to Lakeview Commons on Saturday for the No Kings rally, more than 7 million around the country. Just this morning, the North Carolina State Senate voted to redistrict under pressure from the Trump administration. Texas voted to create five new Republican seats. Missouri voted to draw a new map, and Indiana, Florida, Kansas, and Ohio are considering it. So, why is Donald Trump strong-arming states to rig the election? It's to prevent we, the people, from changing course in the midterm elections, as happened in 1994 and 2010, when Republicans gained large numbers of House seats under Presidents Clinton and Obama, and 2006 and 2018, when Democrats gained seats under Presidents Bush and Trump. This is the natural course of democracy, that Donald Trump is trying to stop this cycle through his power grab. Prop 50 was written as a temporary remedy to Trump's attempt to prevent checks and balances on his rule. I would say if Donald Trump and his congressional allies were sincerely interested in fair elections, there would be scores of cosponsors on Representative Kylie's bill to prohibit mid-decade redistricting across the country, but anyone know how many cosponsors there are? Zero. So, I would just say, this is really a highly partisan resolution that would be understandable if it were a meeting of the South Lake Tahoe Republican Club, but not the city council. I can't think of a more partisan proposal in recent memory. Just in conclusion, passing this resolution won't affect the outcome of Prop 50. Millions of us have already cast our ballots, and few, if any, voters will take their direction from your position. But passing this resolution would cast the council as a highly partisan body, taking a highly divisive position that does not represent a consensus view in our community at a time when we urgently need leaders to find common ground to confront the many challenges that are facing us. So, please vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Friedrich, for your comments. Anybody else in the room that would like to make comment? All right, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move to Zoom.
All right. Currently, we have two hands raised. Carol Dom.
Thank you for staying open this late to hear everybody's comments. Please endorse no on Prop 50. Voters have elected their congressional and assembly representatives, which do affect us at a local level, just as you were elected by the people. By rezoning our boundary policy and changing their chosen, our chosen elected officials after the people already voted is the opposite of integrity. Not supporting this endorsement of no on Prop 50 would show you disrespect the people in your community who vote and care about your local politics. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a couple more hands raised. Telephone number, last four digits, 7367. Hit star nine to unmute yourself. All right, moving on, Blake Herschaft. Okay, he is hung up. There's no additional public comments.
All right. So, we will go ahead and bring this item back to council. I don't see any speakers that are present. Have you? That's right. Keith Roberts. Keith, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you. When I brought this forward, it was not meant to be a partisan issue. I'm surprised that all of you out there are making it a partisan issue. I was not directing it at Donald Trump or Gavin Newsom. I was directing it at how it affects our city. I thought I was elected to protect our city the best I can. We are already struggling to get funds and get cooperation from El Dorado County. They failed to support our transit JPA. There's going to be, we're now going to, if this goes, if it passes, you know, with the vote, which I appreciate, we will be a much smaller district, and our district will go down into Sacramento, even further over to the West Slope, which is, which I'd assume is why the county commissioner supervisors didn't oppose it. So, we will, it will affect the city, it will hurt the city, how much, we don't know, but it will make it harder for us to get cooperation from the county, because we are smaller now, or we will be smaller, and we have a voting block that extends further down into the city of Sacramento. So, because of it, because it has become so volatile, and we have so much going on in our city right now, I don't have any problem voting to, voting no against this resolution, just to keep faith, but I do predict we will suffer at some degree from this as a city. And I thought it was my job as a councilman to protect our city. That's where I was coming from.
Roberts, Mr. Robbins.
Congressional redistricting has absolutely nothing to do with our representation in El Dorado County at all. That's our representation in Congress, not the county. And the failure of the county to step up and do their fair share for the members, not just in our city, but in our part of the basin as a whole, is not going to change under, whether or not Prop 50 succeeds or fails. It has nothing to do with it. You know, we can, we can have a discussion, if we really, really want to, on whether or not Kevin Kiley has been good for our community, and I think that's a hard case to make. He has voted to slash healthcare for people on the individual market, which, by the way, Keith, you work in restaurant, that's nearly everybody who works in service. Almost none of them get healthcare through their employers, right? They have to be on the individual market or Medi-Cal, and Kevin Kiley voted to slash funding for healthcare. He voted to slash funding for the forest service, right, which is, which is well, there's management and critical public safety in our community, right? He's, he's voted to terrorize, he's voted in support of terrorizing our LGBT community and our immigrant community, which are many of the people, the latter of which are many of the people who work in the back of house in our service industry. So, we could have a long discussion, if we want to have a political discussion, on who's good and who's good for the city and what role in government, but I think probably the most compelling speaker of the public comments, although I do appreciate all of the comments that were made articulating why taking a position on, on this is not a good idea, or why Prop 50 is, was something we should have, but I think the best comment was the fact that we're not being effective in the last several months. We have run over time, we have been very slow, we've had agenda items pushed off repeatedly. It's almost 11 o'clock at night for a 5:30 meeting, and why is that? It's because we have put VHR after VHR after VHR item on the agenda every single time that takes two hours of public comment, and now we're wading in to national politics. We keep doing this. You think the VHR comments are going to run long. This becomes a referendum, not on potholes and paving and community priorities, but what people think about national, state and national politics. We're never going to get any of these objectives here done. Prop 50 has nothing to do with what we were elected to do for the community, and I appreciate wanting an informational briefing. I think, I think wanting information on what that will mean for our community is a reasonable and sensible thing, but that's a personal thing. Go do the reading and find out, and use that information to decide how to vote. I don't think this city has any business taking a stand on a citizen, on a ballot initiative at the state level. We don't endorse, as a city, candidates for governor. We don't endorse candidates for senate. We don't endorse candidates for president. We don't endorse candidates for Congress, nor should we. None of those have anything to do with what we're supposed to be doing here.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Mr. Jenkins.
Part of the reason, what I've observed since I've been on the council, is that we as a, the reason we're not getting through business, in part, is what Councilmember Robbins talks about, is, is that we have, we keep going back to the same issue, and it remains unresolved. And part of it, too, is we take too many vacations when we don't have meetings. My, my history is councils met every two weeks, and they may have taken breaks, some can make, some meetings, some can make others, but when you don't have council meetings regularly, then you, business gets backed up, especially important business. So, that's, that's a one point. Secondly, since I retired and then returned to, maybe, I believe in community advocacy, and there's a whole bunch of issues. As a, as a local government, I don't see this issue as a partisan issue. An independent, nonpartisan Democrat, Republican, Independent Commission came up with this district. We didn't, we didn't do it, yet the legislature, the governor, wants to change that, and, and let me go back, and they want to, they want to do something different based on some secret meetings, because Brown Act doesn't apply to them, that they have about, because they don't like maybe this person or that person, they want to get rid of them. I happen to have been, in my history, when I was in, worked for the city of Fremont many years ago, when I was handsome and tall and had lots of hair, I, I worked on an issue involving districting, and it had to do with devising communities of interest. We have a community of interest in our districting in California, based on an independent, nonpartisan commission. The, the governor and the legislature and their wisdom want to make it a partisan issue, just like they do in the East Coast, what I call the corrupt East Coast, and the corrupt Midwest coast, and it's not about what party has it, has the, it's about, it's about, it's about, they want control because of what Texas did or what somebody else did. I'm not in Texas. They don't have an independent commission, we do. Maybe Texas needs one of those, and maybe Mr. Kylie should have supported no districting, no gerrymanding anywhere. I remember it was, it was a certain party in the South many years ago that gerrymandered out black voters because they didn't want them voting. It's the same wrong, and as community members, I see this proposition, you may not, the council may not, but I see it as directly affecting our rights to maintain our community of interest at an independent, nonpartisan commission set up. I would like to see, in addition, more advocacy of the city on issues that affect our people, some of which have been mentioned here. We don't have a legislative strategy. We've talked about it, but I would like to see a legislative strategy that discussed issues that affect our community, and there are a myriad of them. I think that is what, you know, we're not robotons. We should be advocates for the members of our community, of all classes of people, of all, I don't mean class like classless, but I mean class of people of different persuasions. And, and, and the reason I wrote, "We're not responsible for what other states do," you know, I, I have my own personal opinions about partisanship, but I don't, I didn't see this as a partisan issue, and I appreciate it that Councilmember Roberts raised the issue, so at least we could have the discussion. The council could choose not to vote on it, and if councils in the past have not been advocates for the community on issues that affect our community, that's their problem. That's their fault. It's not our fault, unless we do nothing like they did for, for positions that affect us, the people, because I believe we have to support our people, whether it's farmworkers in Central Valley, if you're in a farmworker community, as I worked in my first job, you advocated for safety. Some of us advocated personally for safety of farmworkers, and that's not a partisan, or shouldn't be a partisan issue. My point only is, I don't see it as a partisan issue, you may, the council could decide not to vote on it, but don't, but don't tag us one way or the other on this ridiculous thing of partisanship. It has nothing to do with partisanship. It has something to do with good governance. That's, and that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you.
So, yes, no, absolutely. So, for me, I really do believe that the city council needs to focus on the city's business, and we have a lot of business always, and so, I really believe, you know, this is something that the Republican Party has a local group, the Democratic Party has a local group. These are issues for those groups. This is a statewide ballot issue that has nothing to do with the city's business, as there may be different opinions of how it's going to affect the city, I can understand that, but again, this is not the venue or the place, in my opinion, to take this up. I'm not standing on one side or the other, I'll just, that is just what I believe fundamentally is, the business of us is not within our scope. And so, with that, I think we can probably see that there is not two votes on one side, and there's not two, so I don't know if you guys want to go to motion, or if you just want to.
I'll make a motion that we, that we drop this issue without action.
Yeah, if we don't.
We have to make a motion to move on.
Then we do it.
Right, you've requested, there's a request.
You've requested, there's a request of action.
Yeah, I guess we could, so I can second that, sure. Tell me again, please, the motion.
To take, to suspend this issue and take no action.
So we got a motion in a second, and we can vote. Great. All right, well, that will move us into our agenda planning calendar, and this will be Mr. Irvin.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor.
Thanks for your comments.
You're going to miss my council member report. I was going to tell you all about the conference I went to. Guys, it's the best part of the meeting!
Put it on your media, put it on your media thing. Put it on Instagram.
I put most of it on Instagram. Just look at my Instagram, you'll find all.
Put it on YouTube. Please.
We have, we have reports.
I don't have much to add to the APC, other than, as you know, some things have been getting pushed off. Veil, the Heavenly Resort, and Annexation Parking will be on the next item. We do have listed currently the legislative agenda on the next meeting. It's a day meeting, so I'm going to try to pack it, and we'll have a lunch, and we'll get through as much as we can.
Thank you so much, Mr. Irvin. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to our updates and announcements. I'll start with Ms. Stroud.
I did travel to the CalCities annual conference. Was that two weeks ago? It feels like a really long time ago, but I believe it was two weeks ago. It was a good, good content, as always, and got much of my continuing legal education out of the way.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Stroud. Mr. Irvin, or Mrs. Blankenship, sorry.
I got nothing.
Got nothing, perfect. Mr. Irvin.
Ditto to the city clerk's report. The CalCity, appreciate the council supporting us going with other council members to learn about what's going on in the state and other best practices. It's a great conference, so, yep.
Great. Thank you, and now we will move on to council member reports. I'll start on the right of me. Mr. Robbins.
Yes, as, as the rest of us did, I attended the CalCities conference, and I'm disappointed Mr. Lundberg was not here because he criticized me the last time for never reporting about what I did at those conferences. So here's my report for the record. We attended quite a few sessions, everything from addressing the erosion of trust in local government, which was just a little too on the nose to not attend that session, to transit funding developments. But I think the most, to me, the most interesting, and I think most important takeaway item, takeaway conference was the session on childcare as critical infrastructure in a community, which is not a way I had really, not a way I had really spent time thinking about childcare as, as structure, as infrastructure, rather than just necessary, part of the realm of necessary services, but the idea that that is a key enabler for people to get to work in much the same way that roads and transit are, and to consider childcare not just as a commercial service aspect, but as an infrastructure aspect as well. So I thought that was, I won't, I won't go into the long details. It was an hour-long session. I've got about 900 photos of every slide, but I thought that was probably the most interesting session that hit me the most, although the restoring trust in government was just a little on the nose.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Robbins, and Mr. Roberts.
I've got nothing to add. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
First, I would like to thank the city council for sending the council members and the staff to the League of Cal, to the, I still call it the League of California Cities, CalCities Conference. I wish that, I felt that I was able to attend, but I, given circumstances as they were in the city, I thought I should be here. And if you, if you did attend, because you did attend, you will hear many issues that are state issues that affect us directly. I think we should have a voice in those issues, and that's why some of us, on our own, based on our own opinion, communicate many times with the League of California Cities and the National League of Cities on issues that affect us, and it would be nice to have a legislative strategy, as the city manager is going to be bringing forward a discussion, that we have that kind of thing. The third thing that I was disappointed, that we have many millions of Italian-Americans, many Italian people who live in this community, who have businesses in community or successful, and many Italian-Americans across this country, and that it was unfortunate that we were not in a position to have an Italian Heritage, American Heritage Month proclamation for, for recognizing, as we do other fine groups, the importance and contributions made by Italian-Americans.
Is someone who would want to bring that forward?
There were about 10 people that I communicated to appropriate parties that there were, and I'm not talking about city clerk, but I, but I raised the issue. I had many people in the community ask me about it, and were excited with the prospect. And I say, "Hey, next time, we'll do a better job," you know? I mean, that's important. And, and, you know, having, having family who's Italian, who are half Italian, you know, it's, it's not, not me personally, but my brothers, and, and having wonderful Italian people, and maybe that's not a, it is a local issue, but we celebrate all kinds of things. Let's celebrate people who live here in all capacities. And we are Native Americans, our Italians, our Portuguese, our Southeast Asian people, people from the Philippines, people from all, all Wokes. It would be nice to have a, that, and that's my only point.
They just have to make a request to the city clerk for it, and then the city clerk brings it to us, and we can second it.
Requests were made, but not to the city clerk.
Those are your comments, yeah? Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you.
I also went to the Cal League of Cities Conference. I've been many times. I would really support councils and future councils to continue participating in the League of Cities. It's a great thing. And with that, for anybody that hasn't had enough, you can meet me at TRPA at 8:30 a.m., and with that, we are adjourned.
That was easy.